Okay. I'd like to call this meeting the Lakewood City Council for Monday, August 2nd to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Bokey?
Here.
Councilmember Bransetter?
Here.
Councilmember Farmer? Councilmember Moss?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Wayland?
Present.
And Mayor Anderson?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. Now, would you all please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flag slip?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item comes under Proclamations and Presentations. This is a proclamation declaring August 3rd tomorrow as National Night Out. And would Police Chief Mike Sorrow please join Councilmember Bokey for the presentation of proclamation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A proclamation reads, whereas on Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, residents of the city of Lakewood will have an opportunity to get together in their neighborhoods to participate in the 37th Annual National Night Out Against Crime. And whereas the National Night Out provides an exceptional opportunity for the city of Lakewood to join forces with thousands of other communities and millions of others around the world in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the residents of Lakewood play a vital role in assisting the Lakewood Police Department through joint crime and drug prevention efforts in the city. And whereas it is essential that all residents of Lakewood be made aware of the importance of police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness and cooperation, and the impacts that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Lakewood. And whereas National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community. Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaims August 3rd, 2021 as National Night Out Against Crime in the city of Lakewood and urges all residents to participate in one of the various events throughout the community. Proclaim this second day of August, 2021. Don Anderson, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Bokey and Mayor Anderson and council members. It is nice to get back to actually having National Night Out after, like everything else last year, was put on hiatus due to COVID. One of the best things, I think, was we go out on National Night Out to see is just that people are out and getting together in a positive forum. Every event that I go to every year, it's just positive. People are out barbecuing, just talking with neighbors, talking with us. And it's nice to be able to get back to that tomorrow. So, and I do look forward to seeing all of you out there, too. I know all of you are partnered up with one member of our department. So we'll see you out there tomorrow night and at Harry Todd Park ribbon cutting. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Just for the folks listening, we have kind of a kickoff at 5:00 PM at Harry Todd Park in Tillicum. A kind of rededication with the new improvements there, kind of a re-grand opening. So, you're all welcome. Next item is the Clover Park School District Report, and for this, we have Board Member Alyssa Anderson-Person remotely.
All right. Can you hear me okay?
Ms. Pearson, we're unable to hear you. Can you hear us at this time?
Yeah, I can hear you. Let me see. All right.
I see the mute sign on our end.
Can you hear me now? Hear me now? Okay. I can hear you.
There we go. There you go.
Okay, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. Sorry about that. And sorry I can't be there in person. Good evening, Mayor Anderson, Deputy Mayor Wayland, and council members. Thank you for having me here tonight. We are very excited that we are gearing up to go back to school on September 1st. I'm so happy to say that we will be providing full-time, in-person learning for K-12 students. There is still time to enroll your child in the district for the upcoming year, so you can enroll online or by contacting your home school for assistance. We will continue to follow necessary state and State Department health guidelines. We'll be providing, or we'll be following, all safety protocols, and at this time, that does include mask wearing for students and staff. And I want to make it very clear that this is not a local decision. We are required to follow state guidelines and the mask mandates that they have set into place. We will have a virtual learning option for elementary and secondary students whose families have decided that they do not want to send them back full-time in person. We're actually partnering with a third-party provider to provide virtual instruction. Our free summer meals continue through Friday, August 27th. And our summer enrichment and credit retrieval programs were a huge success. This was programs provided by the district to support struggling or credit-deficient learners. It engaged students in various enrichment opportunities and science, math, art, performing arts, and other subjects. The district partnered with Lakewood Gardens, oh my gosh, sorry, Gardens for Field Trips to provide students with hands-on science exploration and with Tacoma Arts Live to practice and perform plays. More than 1,600 students participated, and there was more than 100, or there was 160 staff that were employed. Secondary students earned 322 credits in the program. So, we're very excited for how that turned out, and that is part of our learning recovery program. That's going to continue on for the next two to three years. And I do believe this was mentioned in July's meeting, but just a reminder that there's free online tutoring service for middle and high school students. It's available 24/7, including during the summer, and the service is called Paper, and students can access it through their clever portal. And this is also part of our learning recovery efforts due to the pandemic. And another reminder that the district still has a temporary website. It is cpsd.cloverpark.k12.wa.us, and the new website will launch this fall. And just to end, we have quite a few new administrators, including four new principals at Hillside Elementary, Lakeview Hope Academy, Lockburn Middle School, and Rainier Elementary School. So, we are excited for the new principals at those schools, and that is all I have for tonight. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi there.
My question is about enrollment numbers. What do they look like year over year, as best you know? I know it's kind of a swag right now until you get the final enrollment in.
I believe for our budget, we were estimating a few less than normal, and that is due to the pandemic. You know, some are keeping their students home, or, you know, they went to different districts. So, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but I do know that it was a little less than we normally project.
Not a significant percentage, as best you recall?
No, not that I recall. It wasn't huge, but, I mean, it was noticeable, but not huge.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thanks for joining us tonight and for the update.
Thank you. All right. Have a great night.
Now move to public comment. This is when any member of the audience may comment on items relating to any matter relevant to city business. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Groups that have at least three members can ask, in attendance can ask for a 10-minute, 10 minutes to speak on behalf of the group as a whole. This is a hybrid meeting, so you can also provide comment via the internet or on Zoom as an attendee by calling 1-253-215-8782 and entering the ID 86872632373, or visiting Zoom and entering the meeting ID 86872632373. Upon entering the meeting, please enter your name or other chosen identifier. Use the raise hand function to be recognized. Once you've had your three minutes to speak, the raise hand feature will still be activated, but you will be muted and not have any further opportunity to speak. Please keep your microphones muted when you're on. We have quite a few people who have signed up to speak tonight. I don't mean to discourage anyone, but I would note that we're well aware that any of you are here concerned about Gary Oaks. That will be a subject of the review for potential amendments of the 2022 Comprehensive Plan. So, that will be considered by council later this year for next year's implementation. The first person who has signed up to speak is Matt Cardy.
Well, I'd like to thank you all for letting me have an opportunity to talk to you today, and I would like to know who is responsible for the destruction of the flea market. Did any member of this council vote against that decision on 84th Street? Was that a unanimous decision?
This isn't, A, this isn't an interrogatory. You're able to make--
Okay. So, there was a flea market on--
Sir, sir. Let's follow decorum here. This isn't a question-and-answer period. You're allowed to make public comment.
Okay.
And just for the record, the council doesn't vote on private development.
They don't vote on private development?
No.
Oh. Well, anyway, okay. So, you know, there was a flea market on 84th Street. That's okay. There was a flea market on 84th Street that was destroyed, and, you know, in so doing, you destroyed the livelihoods of 100 families. And what you created then was a warehouse, a warehouse that is now empty, right? There's nobody in there. It's been at least six, eight months. There's nobody there, right? And so now, you want to go across the street and build yet another warehouse in a residential area. So, how would you feel if we built a warehouse next to your house? Would you like that? Because nobody's going to build a warehouse next to your house, right? And so for you, it's great. You don't care, right? So, anyway, I would also like to say that today, we found out that Gunther Ashida, who was an officer at the Capitol Police who defended the Capitol against the white supremacist Republicans who tried to take over and, you know, our democracy. And he committed suicide. He's the third officer to commit suicide after the white supremacist Republican attacks. And nobody seems to be taking any of this seriously. Furthermore, I don't know. That's all I got to say.
Next person signed up is Christina Minetti.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. My name's Christina Minetti, and I've lived in Lakewood, as you probably remember, for five decades. Thanks for the opportunity to comment this evening. I'm here to oppose the further destruction of trees, habitat, and quality of life in Lakewood in the name of growth, 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 as a recent city bulletin trumpeted. Like many or even most people, I oppose any further construction of warehouses, which is not only ecologically, urbanistically, and socially destructive, but also shortsighted because we need more residential stock. How does all this destruction make me feel? Well, pretty lousy. During the city council's study session meeting on the 12th of July, Mr. Wayland said that the event at Fort Silicon made him feel cranky. I was pretty sure that he was talking about the shooting and not the Disney film that was playing. And if Mr. Wayland felt cranky after a shooting in his city's showcase venue, this raises questions. One might be shocked, upset, deeply disturbed, angry perhaps, but cranky? As for me, lots of words come to mind when I think of how the city of Lakewood's excesses make me feel, but I can guarantee you that cranky isn't one of them. Disgusted, shocked, horrified, devastated, any of these would be apt. With every week that passes, we learn of more horrors that the city is perpetrating on the city of Lakewood and its people. This week, we discovered that the former Oakwood Elementary School on 85th with 80 or more Oaks, Gary Oaks, is slated to become another gigantic warehouse in the middle of a densely residential area. These are huge, well, large, mature oaks. One of them is four feet almost in diameter, which means it's like 400 years old. There's more than two acres of Gary Oak woodland on that property, and according to the Lakewood Municipal Code, even one acre qualifies to be protected as critical habitat. So, I want to know why. Why isn't it protected? When we talked to the people, they were mostly Koreans and Hispanics. They were shocked to hear the news. They didn't know anything about it, even though it's been in work for years. So, through an interpreter, I heard about how much they love this place, and I felt absolutely horrible being the messenger of this upsetting news. And I didn't even know until we told them. So, it's been the same over and over again lately. Wherever warehouses involved, people don't know. Neighbors on gravelly drive, they told me they watched the public sign go up five months after the period was over. 123rd and Springbrook, Woodbrook, they said they hadn't been properly informed. Just a block away from the old Oakwood School is this huge warehouse. Who could have approved such a misguided plan? But the killing of oaks and unbelievable destruction, it hasn't taken place yet. So, there's still time for you to turn back these terrible decisions and save Sylvan Park, Gary Oak Habitat, and quality of life of the citizens of Lakewood who reside there. And it's your chance to help begin restoring our faith in you, our city government. Thank you.
James Dunlap is next.
My name is James Dunlop, and I am a Lakewood resident. I want to comment on the city's doublespeak, where they say the opposite of what they mean. We can see doublespeak in the city's mission statement, where it claims to preserve our natural environment. In practice, it does the opposite. However, if anyone questions the city's environmental record, they'll point to Fort Silicon Park, where the Gary Oaks are well looked after. They might also provide a finite list of places where the oaks are protected. For example, the mini Gary Oak Preserve at St. Clair Hospital. But these locations are like reservations, where Gary Oaks and the wildlife they support are corralled. Outside the reservations, it's a free fire zone for Gary Oaks. Homeowners can cut down their oaks with few restrictions. Utility companies can kill and maim oak trees at will, as we've seen on Silicon Boulevard, while businesses will get all the help they need to turn centuries-old ecosystems into warehouses and paved concrete. Or, to use the city's own language, it's about bulldozing barriers. Of course, some people are more hurt than others in the environmental free-fire zone that much of the city has become. Or, to continue with the Orwellian analogy, some citizens are more equal than others. You can plot the addresses of the city's seven counselors on Google Maps, and you'll notice straight away that they are all unaffected by warehouse development. Contrast that with those living around the former Oakwood School. They have a de facto park with over 80 oak trees, some of which are probably older than the United States itself. The whole lot is scheduled for destruction, to be turned into a warehouse. It's a shame that many of the local residents aren't native English speakers and are only now realizing what is going to happen. It's a shame none of the residents had the foresight to be elected to the city council or to Clover Park School Board a dozen years ago. If they had have done, they might have had some chance of stopping the development.
Next is Helen Wagner. Helen Wagner. Helen Wagner is next.
Good evening. I am Helen Wagner of Lakewood, and I am advocating for Gary Oaks, especially for one grove at Oakwood. Lakewood has not been mostly a bedroom community. Is that right? Okay. Lakewood has not been mostly a bedroom community for some time now, but it seems to be turning into a warehouse complex. On 84th Street stands a newly erected warehouse with a beautiful fence around it with a lock on the gate. No one is there. It replaces a very useful community place, the swap meet. Recently, I revisited the field that used to be Oakwood Elementary School. That site is only a very few blocks off 84th Street, but it too is slated to become a warehouse. The school was well-named. There is a beautiful grove of oaks, some of them very old, as there are trees there that approach two feet in diameter or more. These oaks are scheduled to be cut down to make way for the new warehouse. This will go close to the property lines of some lovely houses. I bet those homeowners are delighted at the prospect of devaluing their property. Perhaps they do not even know what is coming. It sounds as though, the word hasn't got around, that the area is about to be destroyed. How many warehouses does one area need, anyway? Especially if they're just going to sit idle. I guess that heritage means nothing. What does Oakwood mean without any oaks? Another irony is that the former school sits in a neighborhood called Sylvan Park. Please help halt the practice of replacing beautiful and important places with harsh and man-made atrocities. Thank you for your time.
Next is Jenna Lee.
Hello, my name is Jenna Lee. I'm a resident of Seattle, and you all should be ashamed of yourselves. My associate and I walked around Sylvan Park yesterday where the former Oakwood School was located. We spoke to the residents there, many of whom are Korean, just like me. We asked each of them if they were aware that the city was planning to bulldoze the trees to build a warehouse. Everyone was floored and vehemently opposed. One man told us, "This area is the lungs of our neighborhood. Everyone comes here to rest and have a chance to breathe, even people from far away." A woman joined in, stating that the park had become even more important to residents since the outbreak of COVID-19. "This is the one place we can still come out to, to exercise." Again and again, they mentioned the nearby warehouse where once a thriving flea market had stood. "It's completely empty," they said. "A year, and it's still empty. Why are they wanting to make another?" "There will be pollution. Our air will be bad." Everyone we spoke to agreed on one thing. This warehouse construction was wrong, and the city would hurt its people. I had all these conversations in Korean. I'm 19 years old. I'm not even a resident of this city, and I've already done in one evening more than you all have done to inform these Korean residents of what is going to happen to their neighborhoods, and that's a shame. No one received any letters of notification, and no one knew anything about this. You know how hard my community had to work to make a life for themselves here as immigrants? Working day in and day out at grocery stores and laundromats? You know how much of a struggle it is to learn to communicate in a new language and still feel disempowered? Because you know that accent means that you're seen as less of an American than anyone else. No one I spoke to believed their voice would be listened to. They told me, "How can we Koreans go before the Americans, the city, and tell them we oppose this? They won't listen to us." and tell them we oppose this? They won't listen to us." You've already told my community how little you care about us by failing to give adequate notice, and now you're going to take away their lungs. A city that welcomes diversity, that cares about immigrants and cares about its people would not do this. You have a shelf out there, actually three shelves full, of paraphernalia of my culture. You have Korean stuff there. So you purport to celebrate us, and you can't do us the decency of letting us be civically involved. People need to be informed, and you need to take care to translate materials so that every single person can have access and a means to protest. It's a damn shame. That's all.
Next is Sean Ehren. Sean Ehren.
My name's Sean Ehren. I live in Tacoma, but I'm currently serving an AmeriCorps term with Norris Pierce County in Lakewood, working out of the warehouse and times at the food banks. Today, I went and visited a couple of sites that I think you guys have been doing a piss-poor job of protecting. For one, the Oakwood Elementary, a former site. You know, it's a good grove. There's good prairie habitat there. And you're really doing a disservice to the people there by throwing up walls of warehouses around them and forcing them out of their homes. That's what's going to happen. They're going to be displaced. Housing value's going to drop. People are going to get kicked out, and it's going to become a warehouse district. That's what will happen if you put that there. They're not going to want trucks down their residential streets. Okay? The Korean senior center there, you can tell that they're using it as a park. It's just, you guys don't have the courage to make it one. Yeah, I also went and checked out Clover Creek. I've been driving past it a few times, and awful shape. You know, it's a wetland habitat. The land right next to it's for sale. The creek's full of shopping carts and garbage and needles, and I don't even know if you guys know that. Like, do you walk this city? Do you drive this city? Do you care about the people here? People need nature. It's a fact. Nature heals people. If you care about veterans, look at what's coming out about how veterans are healing their PTSD with time in nature. Nature isn't something that you just have to go on vacation for. It needs to be in our lives. If you can't walk to it, if you can't see it around you, people are cut out. It becomes a thing for the rich. Look at the neighborhoods. Neighborhoods that are rich have adequate tree cover. Poor neighborhoods are heat islands. I mean, I'm looking around this municipal building, and it's like you guys don't even know whose land you're on. There's no native plants here. You know? This area was once a beautiful prairie, okay? My family's lived here for a long time, and it's been plowed over. This is where the Puyallup people, they grew their camis. There's endangered species here. That habitat is for endangered species, something you hear about in other countries, but we have them here. It could be again if you guys just had the fucking guts to make it one. Whose side are you on?
Another outburst like that, and we will discontinue public comment. You understand? Another outburst like that, and we will discontinue public comment. I believe in the First Amendment, but the First Amendment requires some civility. Next person up is Melissa Jackson. Right in the peanut gallery. If you disrupt the meeting, you will be removed. Ms. Jackson.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you very much for letting me speak today. My name is Melissa, and I am a longtime resident of Lakewood. My family has lived here for over sixty years, and we have been in the Tacoma area since the early 1800s. It's come to my attention that there is a few stands of oaks that you're planning to remove in the sake of progress. And I would like to have it on record that I disagree with this decision, and have finally decided that it's time to get up and say something about it. I've been really disappointed with the city of late, as I've observed the systematic destruction of our wetlands, our creeks, our native habitats, our oaks. And it seems like it's all just for the sake of progress. But the question is at what cost? Our city's beautiful natural environment is being replaced by industrial districts, as has been outlined by the People's Forum. We're rezoning our lands and putting our natural beauty and environment at risk. I've been here a while, and I know that Lakewood and the city of Tacoma before it has made a lot of mistakes. One of those mistakes, for example, is the Villa Plaza/Lakewood Town Center and the little creek that runs underneath it. But do we have to repeat those mistakes? Or can we start making some positive changes? And that's what I propose. You have a unique opportunity here to turn back in time and fix some of the problems that we have created, save some of the lands that we have plowed under before they're all gone. I live on Lake Avenue. I have Gary Oaks in my yard. This is a baby right here. He's a year old. I dig up my oaks, and I preserve them and save them. If I don't do it, who will? There's something I want you to think about. The true meaning of life is to plant trees under whose shade you do not expect to sit. We have a responsibility here. We are tenants of the land, and we need to accept and grow up to that extra responsibility. Thank you.
Next to speak is Amelia Escobedo.
First, I would like to say that there's a lot that our community needs, and it brings me a lot of joy to hear all of you guys speak about the Gary Oaks and coming out here and showing your support. Like, I want to cry right now, for real. Like, to see all that support and love, it's beautiful. Thank you. So I just learned that we don't have a recreation center for our children. We have a recreation center, but it's Pierce County, and only children that are special needs can use it. I am upset right now with the city council because we don't have anything for our children to go to. And you wonder why the kids wander on the streets, because they have nowhere to go or anything to do. You have these programs in place that are programs for children to sit still, and there's only two games that you can play that are active. Children that have been locked up during this COVID time does not want to sit there and play with freaking Legos. They want to run their little hearts out at a park, at a recreation they can play at. They want that. They need that. We need that as a community. Another thing that I saw when to go door knocking. Arcoites Mexican restaurant. They built a roundabout around it that's off of veterans. He complained. He was angry because this is a mom-and-pop shop. Good food, good people. He complained and tried to file a claim because that construction that was being done on that roundabout messed up their building, and nothing's being done about it. He is upset because his father is of Mexican descent, and he doesn't speak English well. Why is he being put on the back burner? Why aren't y'all helping people like this? The city did the destruction to his building. The lights fell off. There's cracks in his building that you can physically see with your eyes, and nobody's being held responsible. You guys can step up to the plate. You guys can be the winners. You guys can be that. But you have to choose it. We can't make that choice for you, but what we can do is vote you out. And that's why we're running. That's why we're here. Another thing is it's upsetting to see. I've been here. You know, I'm a veteran. I came here, and I love it here. But I want to see this community better. Everything on base is awesome. They have everything on there, museums, everything for kids. What do they have for the kids of Lakewood? What is here for us? You guys need to stand up to this. Stand up and rise up and do this for us, please. Thank you.
Next is Christopher Escobedo.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for having me, like always. And here we go. Shame, shame, shame. Shame on you and the city council that have been in those seats for over ten years. You don't care about the homeless? You prove that over and over by giving our money for the homeless to Tacoma, pretending that it helps our homeless in Lakewood. You're giving them a million dollars for seven temporary beds. One million dollars can build lots of permanent infrastructure for the homeless here in Lakewood. Where is the safe space for the homeless located at in Lakewood, so we can go and help them? Some of us in Lakewood actually care about the poor and the children created by an unjust system. Speaking of children, like she said, there's no recreation center for children in Lakewood, Washington, because of these city council members who have been there for over ten years. And Jason Wayland decided to lie a couple weeks ago and said, "Yes, we do have a recreation center." But like she said, we visited, found out that it's only for the mentally challenged kids. And I love that part. You know, but I have other kids that aren't mentally challenged, and they need to be physically challenged. I repeat, there's no recreation center for children in Lakewood. The poor suffer, while the rich live their privileged lives of fishing docks and six hundred a month pool club memberships. I demand the city council propose and follow through with building a recreation center on what is now Fort Silicon Park. That park should also be renamed a Native American theme to show the solidarity between Lakewood and the tribes this land belongs to. Chief Leshai Park is one option, especially since Chief Leshai Monument was broken and shows such disrespect to my ancestors. On a different subject, the company who was rudely disrupted and ripped off and our gracious business owners located in Lake City must be helped. The city engineer made the decision to say they probably didn't cause the damage, and this in turn made the restaurant's own insurance not pay for the damages caused by the roadwork. This is unacceptable, and the people responsible must be held accountable. This company also parked all over the restaurant's parking lot without permission, leaving no room for customers to park. And if that's not enough torture, now y'all have them working on Gravel Lake, which stops all the flow of traffic to this restaurant from the highway. Your decisions have consequences and have caused stress and suffering for our brothers and sisters of Lakewood. The city council must provide rejustive grievances to help this restaurant and get through the situation you put them in. Thank you for listening, and let's get to work. Save the Gary Oaks. Live up to the American values taught to us by elders, and stand up for righteousness and racial justice. If not, then step down and let us Native Americans show you how to be Americans.
Next is Dave Zink. Dave Zink. Dave Zink.
Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, and neighbors and friends. Grow, grow, grow. Sounds like the philosophy of cancer. Yeah, there are real needs out there. Well, what kind of growth? What kind of growth? Climate change is a serious issue that we need to get serious about. We need to deal with this. Boasting about grow, grow, grow. What kind of growth? That's the question. Woodbrook trashed, as people have said. Eighty-plus Gary Oaks making up over two acres of Gary Oak Habitat. Endangered species there, folks. For what? How many jobs would this bring? What, twenty, thirty, fifty max? Would it be worth it? Would that be worth it? Another question, well, I know this isn't a Q and A, but one concern I've got is take a look at Amazon's track record. Take a look at the labor abuse, the hyper-exploitation. You can find plenty of examples of this if you take the time to Google it. In my humble opinion, Amazon should be boycotted, not invited to trash our lovely city. There are real needs out there, and I would, please, let's go ahead and do what needs to be done. Not bulldoze oak habitat. Thank you very much for your time.
Teresa King. Teresa King.
Hello. I was gonna say, I don't have too much to say, and then I sat down and listened. Okay, I do have a lot to say. I just want to read the first sentence from the Lakewood Historical website. In the history tab, it says, "Lakewood was called the prairie in the beginning, an expanse of land about twenty miles square dotted with small lakes and occasional strands of Gary Oaks trees." The trees are in this city's history. They've been here. They should stay here. And I think everyone coming is very great, but I don't think that it should have taken this long. I think just telling you that there's three percent of these trees left should be enough. And I appreciate you saying that it's, you know, the upcoming amendments, it's going to be addressed there. I do appreciate that. But we just really need to do something. There's municipal codes that I don't think are being followed. So I would just hate to see this keep going. We just need to stop allowing these trees to be cut down. And the warehouse comment, I totally, Mary Anderson, that's a valid comment, but then I would have to say that we should stop rezoning these areas for warehouses. That's all. Thank you.
Next person signed up is Trisha Parsons.
Hello, everyone. I was going to start off with a compliment. I've been using the Lakewood 311 app, and I think it's awesome. So thank you very much to whomever decided on that app. I think it's really helpful for the citizens. And if anyone's not using it yet, I recommend downloading it. It's really a great app. So thank you very much for that. Tonight, I'm speaking to request a review of Lakewood's tree retention policy in favor of preserving our remaining Gary Oaks. I spoke two weeks ago about the same topic, and my feelings remain the same. I'm going to keep coming, because I think it's really important that we get the word out about this. We need to preserve these trees, plain and simple. These trees are part of Lakewood's charm and character. I know personally, just walking amongst them relaxes me after a long day of work. I take a walk under the Gary Oaks every day in my neighborhood, and it completely changes my mindset. The city is focused on growth and building the economy, which in turn may benefit some of the citizens, and I get it. But surely, there's a way to save these trees in that process. I'm not here to necessarily point fingers or place blame. I'm a solution seeker, and I'm just looking for a better solution to what's going on. I want to help just figure it out as a group so we can better protect these trees. They're a key natural feature of our city. Mature trees are a benefit to its property, to its neighbors, and to the wildlife of this area. I've written down so many questions, thinking about solutions that we could come up with and how we could figure these things out. How can we put a protection plan into place like other cities have? How can the public be more clearly informed of tree removals beyond a deep dive into a multi-page permit? Why aren't fines for illegal tree removal larger? Who has final sign-off in the removal of these trees? And are they actually visiting these sites and talking to neighbors before they sign off? And I think these are all just questions I'm asking myself, and I'm wondering why this isn't happening. Trees are for the people. They're for the animals, and they're for the city. Please save them and strive to do better, because it matters to your citizens and your future citizens, like my nieces and nephew. I'd love to talk more about solutions for saving these trees, whether it be attending a planning committee meeting or building out and improve or building out and improve Lakewood tree retention policy with a group of people. Either way, please count on me and, and let's, let's try to, try to make everything better. Thank you.
Next is Glenn Spieth.
Glenn Spieth, Lakewood. I was going to get into a little bit different area, history of Lakewood. When I look at Silicon Boulevard, I can visualize Sherman, Grant, Pickett, Casey, Couch, and Isaac Stevens. All of them were Civil War generals. All of them served at Fort Silicon. Except for Isaac Stevens, he was a governor, first governor of Washington. There's a monument to Chief Leshy right there next to Fort Silicon. He was kept in the guardhouse on the playground side of Silicon Boulevard or now park at Fort Silicon. Isaac Stevens, of course, was kind of instrumental in having him arrested. Tried. And Thurston County Sheriff led to his, what's that? Anyway, there's a monument to Leshy at Fort Silicon. Lakewood Historical Society is having a program tomorrow night. And unfortunately, I'm a worker bee, so I don't know the details of what the subject is, but it's history, Washington history. And that starts at six o'clock in the museum because now we have a place to hold our own meetings, our own projection equipment, screens, video equipment and so forth. So I know tomorrow night's a difficult night with the night out. However, whoever can come at six. That's a book signing for the author that's doing the program tomorrow. And so you're all invited. Thank you.
Next, next person signed up, and I apologize about the last name because I can't read it. Well, Christina Orton, Orton Can.
All right, my last name's Ortengren and my name's Christina. I've spoken here once before. Thank you for having this forum for us and listening. I am concerned about tree cover in the city of Lakewood in general. I drive down Nianza to get I-5 South for work. Unfortunately, I don't get to work in this community. And I drive through a beautiful forested avenue there, which I've watched becoming deforested as I've lived here. And it's just a simple, what am I trying to say? Symptomatic of what the, of the, what we're seeing everywhere. Sometimes traffic's really bad and I'll do, you know, go past, skip JBLM and Dupont-Stellicom Road and you get to see the Amazon warehouse that was built there. There is a creek. There's a teeny weeny little bit of trees that are left that we're trying to protect shade for that particular little creek there. I'm assuming that it must have salmon in it or else they wouldn't even have left that. You know, Jeff Bezos has enough money to solve the world's problems and he can take a joyride to space and back. So he doesn't need to take down the last little stand of Gary Oaks in that neighborhood. Now, you guys, I understand aren't, don't vote, you know, on private development. So you know what the citizens of Lakewood want. And we want protection for our forest cover. Climate change is real. And research indicates that we need to plant trees. A mature Gary Oak, four hundred years old, clearly pre-existed the development. There is no reason why we cannot preserve existing large trees and still have development happen. Why can't they plant around it? We used to. My house, nineteen thirty, it was built here in Lakewood and the trees were all there already. The last time I came to speak here, I was motivated because Ranger, the tree expert, cut down seven large Doug firs on my street, which had perching bald eagles. And the report for the Gary Oak says that there's no, you know, critical wildlife that's going to be impacted. I would say the human beings here are evidence of impact. But there are definitely impacted species that may not be there at that time. Please reconsider the zoning and allowing the permits for this and also
Thank you.
on our comprehensive plan.
Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
We, Shavana Yuso.
Hi, my name is Shavana Yuso and I'm a resident of Lakewood. I live in the Springbrook area. Usually have something written out, but some's going to freestyle it today. So these people, and we've been here for a few weeks now, talking about the trees. It's great. It's going to be introduced in the 2020 thing, but it's just something that's been going on for years. I talked to a woman a few weeks back about the destruction of Woodbrook Elementary School. And she said, oh, we talked about that for some years, but the residents there did not know. So I mean, I think it's the council's job to inform the residents there in plain language that was going on. When you look on the Lakewood website, it shows like a chain of command type thing. And on the top, it says the citizens of Lakewood, the people of Lakewood, and then the city council. But it kind of seems like you guys are going above the citizens of Lakewood, especially how you treat some of us here while we're speaking. I'm calling us peanuts and stuff like that's ridiculous. Another thing I want to touch on today is our homelessness in Lakewood. I read an article, I think in the Suburban Times, where Mayor Anderson said that he's not ready to jump on like purchasing hotels for our homeless people to get them off the streets while Puyallup and Fife is. The reason why, it was said that usually small cities like ours here in Lakewood, we don't give out money for stuff like that. It's more of a county thing. But Fife and Puyallup, if you put their population together, they're smaller than Lakewood. So I mean, you have homeless people sitting outside of this building. They pay taxes too, you know, they are important. We're all the people of Lakewood. So I would just reconsider our, your position on housing the homeless people. And let's just get them off the streets first and then we can find a permanent solution. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, is anybody signed up online? Two more signed up. Ado Aquitas.
Hi, I'm the tree hugger, if y'all don't remember. So talking about the trees. The room grew. Let's take a vote again. Who's in favor for cutting them down? Opposed? There's your vote. It ain't hard. The room's growing. Nobody wants this. Except for that little capitalism that we were talking about last time. Nobody wants it. Y'all can stop it. Because guess what? You work for the peanut gallery. You work for them. You mean nothing without them. They're your boss. The peanut gallery, the little ones. Her, her. You work for her. Saying that, oh, we're going to close down speaking if we can't do it respectfully. My man, that dropped a hard F. Was talking about POWs when he did that. Do you see the flags behind you? They represent those same vets. The ones that you guys are forgetting because to his point, not only do they go out to nature, they will plant nature to thrive, to heal, because that's what it does. That's enough for the tree because these guys got that. Let's talk about Mike Wiley. So I'm gonna make some enemies right here. Mike Wiley is not a murderer. Nope. A murderer kills one person. Mike Wiley's a serial killer. And y'all gave him a badge and then y'all let him tap it. And I see a bunch of faces out here that are very, very uninterested with everything that anybody has to say out here. And that's been a running joke out on the streets for a while now. That when somebody steps up to this podium, you guys become very, very uninterested. With your heads down, probably figuring out what you guys are going to have for dinner or whatever, but your heads ain't here. I'm coming up on my time. So please gain interest in your community because you work for them. And some of you guys' chairs ain't going to belong to you for too much longer. Oh, I forgot. Said Joaquin was murdered by a serial killer. All power to the people.
Once more and you're gone. Oyungbo X.
How y'all doing? Good to see y'all again. First off, let me go ahead and start with a couple of ten points from the Black Panther Party, since you don't know your history. Yep. Thank you. Couple of points from the ten-point platform from the Black Panther Party. Number one, we want freedom. We want power to determine the destiny of our black community. With that, all our POCs, all y'all. We want full employment of our people. We believe that the federal government is responsible and obligated to give every man, woman, employment or a guaranteed income. Number three, we want an end to the robbery by the capitalists of our black and oppressed communities. And number four, we want decent housing fit for shelter of human beings. Now, the reason I bring these four up is because it is exactly what the city is messing up on right now. You need to save the endangered Gary Oak trees in Springbrook, first off. You need to arrest and charge the domestic terrorist, terrorist, Mike Wiley. You need to fire Police Chief Zarro, who is not doing his job, not serving the community. And just one time, Say Joaquin. And you know what? The city don't serve the people. You serve yourselves, your own fat pockets. So we'll do it. We'll build that recreational center for the children. Y'all don't need to help. We'll do it. Keep critical race theory in schools. History is diverse. Keep it that way. And with that, hug a tree. Save our oxygen. Stop being greedy capitalist swine. And remember your place, puppets. You serve us, not the reverse. All power to the people.
And Clerk Kusari went online to speak.
Mayor Anderson, we have Dennis Haugen.
Mr. Haugen.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Dennis Haugen here. Used to be a Lakewood citizen now in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Hats off to Chief Zarro. You know, it's interesting to me that some gal came in from Seattle to tell you, tell you what the problem is in Lakewood. Seattle is a dominant city. And the Puget Sound sets the example that gives people all over the world the impression of what the Puget Sound is like. After a solid year and after chop and burning down buildings, the first responsibility of Jenny Durkin was to protect the property and the people and law and order. She failed to do that, which has caused attention to the Puget Sound as a lawless place, a place where you want to defund the police. And it's going to be hard to get money and people to come into Seattle or the Puget Sound. For example, right now, it costs five thousand dollars to get us the biggest single axle truck to get out of Seattle. But you can get it for less than a third of that to get into Seattle. That's because people are getting out of the Puget Sound area and then they have to go chase the trucks to bring the empties back. Night after night after night after night after night. Puget Sound has made world news. And I object to the person who stands up there and accuses the police as murderers. If that was the case, we'd have a trial. And everybody should shut up until the trial is over. So anyway, support the police because the Puget Sound has a reputation now of defunding the police. And that means the criminals can run the whole Puget Sound. You know, and I would be, if I lived anywhere in the Puget Sound, as well as Lakewood, I'd be more concerned about my life.
Thank you, Mr. Haugen. Your time's up. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else signed up to speak online?
Mayor Anderson, we don't have any other virtual hands raised to speak this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. I declare public comment closed. We now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Anderson, we did have a last minute hand that came up as you were closing it. I don't know if you'd like to take the comment. It's from an Ellen Kohima that I just received.
Online?
Correct.
Okay. I don't, I don't have the access.
I think you can hear me now, I think.
Okay, yeah, we call him, is it Ellen Kohima?
Kojima. Thank you. I'm a resident of University Place, just a short distance from you all. And in recent years, I have started to learn for the first time about Gary Oaks and that they are our only native oak tree out here. All the other oaks are back east. And how important these are to our history, our historical environment. And how important these are to our history, our historical environment, and the, how much they have been destroyed and how, what the need is to protect them. And so a lot of people in the Pacific Northwest have been learning about this and formed these preservation groups for, just for the Gary Oaks in Washington, Oregon, and in Canada, in British Columbia. And Oak Harbor, Washington, which takes its name from, from the oak tree, has proclaimed 2021, this year, to be the Year of the Oak. And oaks are a keystone species for the Puget Sound area. They provide, they're endangered themselves and they provide habitat for endangered birds, mammals, and insects. The Gary Oak ecosystem is classified as a critically imperiled ecosystem in our state. According to the U.S. Forest Service, up to 99% of Gary Oak habitat has been lost in some areas of the, of the Northwest. This site that we're talking about is located on a major migratory route called the Pacific Flyway. Too many Gary Oaks in Lakewood have already been destroyed. It's upsetting to the neighbors and to those of us living in the area of Pierce County and even in the greater Pacific Northwest. More destruction of these trees will rob us of cooling shade trees and critical habitat in an important natural corridor. The application to build a warehouse should be rejected.
So going twice on the online comments. Are there any additional commenters?
Mayor Anderson, there are none at this time.
That's it?
Correct, none.
Final answer. Okay, I declare public comment closed. We now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council Study Session of June 28, 2021. B, approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting of July 6, 2021. C, approval of the minutes of the City Council Study Session of July 12, 2021. D, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $1,735,479.2 for the period of June 16, 2021 through July 15, 2021. E, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $2,572,704.24 for the period of June 16, 2021 through July 15, 2021. F, motion number 2021-51, authorizing the execution of an agreement with John Fleming in the amount of $140,000 for the Colonial Plaza Public Art Project. G, motion number 2021-52, authorizing the execution of a home agreement with Living Access Support Alliance for the acquisition of 8966 Gravely Lake Drive Southwest for affordable rental housing opportunities. H, motion number 2021-53, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with the Washington State Healthcare Authority to continue serving as Lakewood's Choice Fiscal Sponsor. I, motion number 2021-54, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Washington Military Department for Emergency Management Aid and Assistance. J, motion number 2021-55, authorizing the purchase of a Pharaoh 3D Crime Scene Scanner. K, motion number 2021-56, appointing the 2021 through 2022, 2022 Youth Council Members. L, motion number 2021-57, appointing Kara Ferreira and Teresa King to the Public Safety Advisory Committee through August 2, 2024. And M, items filed in the Office of the City Clerk, 1, Public Safety Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes of February 3, 2021. And 2, landmarks in the Heritage Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of May 27, 2021.
Thank you. Is there any matter which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Ms. Wayland.
Item G is engulfed.
Are there any others? Tonight entertain a motion for approval of this consent agenda, absent item G, motion number 2021-52. So moved. It's been moved by Mr. Bokey, seconded by Mr. Wayland, that we adopt the consent agenda minus item G. Sorry for the discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now cover item G. Madam Clerk.
Item G, motion number 2021-52, authorizing the execution of a home agreement with Living Access Support Alliance for the acquisition of 8966 Gravely Lake Drive Southwest for affordable rental housing opportunities.
Mr. Wayland.
Thank you. I note in the request for council action, there is a discussion of the final terms of the agreement, which are to include, as council indicated, a timeline for the completion of construction. And I assume within that tenure timeline, it would include a requirement to pursue the comp plan amendments so that the parcels could be properly zoned, as we discussed, to get the greatest density possible. I just didn't see any proposed agreements. So I assume that that's something pending for review.
Mr. Bure.
To answer your question is yes. That in that period of time, they would have to pursue land use amendments. The reason we didn't specify it is because they continue to look at other options. And until they have an idea of what it is they wish to pursue, that would be the appropriate time to come forward with land use changes.
But just to confirm for members of the audience, should the plan come to fruition and be built out, it will provide approximately how many potential units of new affordable housing?
Depends upon the zoning that the land use destinations the city council approves. If you're looking at increasing the number of units, somewhere between 35 to 50.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am in support of this particular request for council action and would encourage that we adopt it.
Another motion?
So moved.
Been moved by Mr. Wayland, seconded by Mr. Branstad, that we adopt motion number 2021-53.
52?
Excuse me, 52. To provide an agreement with the LASSA for the acquisition of additional land for affordable housing. Sorry for the discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries. We now move to the regular agenda. Public hearings and appeals. This is the date set for a public hearing of the 2021 Annual Development Regulations. For this, we have Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tiffany Spear with the Community and Economic Development Department. Starting on page 123 of your packet this evening, you'll see the materials for tonight's public hearing. And it summarizes the information that was provided to you in last week's study session. So it explains the various amendments that would affect Title 18A primarily, but there are several others in Title 5, 14, and 15. Most of these are somewhat technical in nature, having been identified by staff or permit applicants as problems that needed to be corrected within the code that were inadvertent omissions, that sort of thing. One, where there's a little more substantive change would be Chapter 18A 80 regarding parking. And that was explained to the council and the public last week. So happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Spear? For the benefit of the audience, you know, this has been for the council for study sessions previously. And now is, with that, we'll move to the public hearing. If you wish to speak on this public hearing topic, please identify yourself by name and city. This is like the public comment, except that you have to limit your, the subject matter of your comment to the 2021 Annual Development Regulations. You have three minutes to speak. Yellow light comes on in 30 seconds. Red light comes on when your time is up. We have no one who has signed up to speak on these annual development regulations. That doesn't preclude you from speaking at public comment. And so you can step up to the podium and identify yourself. And in the meantime, is, Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up online?
Mayor Anderson, Dennis Haugen has raised his hand to speak.
Okay, we'll go to Mr. Haugen.
Oops, I forgot to unmute myself there. Dennis Haugen, Sioux Falls, used to be in Lakewood. I'd be very cautious about your development regulations. There's over a million people, since they took, since they opened the borders on January 20th, there's over a million illegal immigrants of coming into the country and thousands more that are hardcore criminals. Now, the federal government has been looking to places to put those people. And of course, Washington State is a sanctuary state. Other states don't want them unless they've done, gone through the legal process. They're coming in from 100 and, 100 and some countries. So any efforts to build low-cost housing may be to be a trick because the government will pay the rent. They probably won't tell you why there is pressure to, to develop and plan for growth. But I don't know where the growth would be coming from for the Puget Sound. You're not a law and order state. It's not attractive for money and people to come into the country. But the government's going to have someplace to put these million people. And they project another maybe million or 2 million by the end of the year. So there, we see these news reports where they're sneaking around with buses and going in the middle of the night. And one governor has had to, is even threatening transportation that was paid by, because they're also bringing in COVID in great numbers. So don't be tricked. You know, you can put in warehouses and warehouses don't commit crimes. But you don't know what you're going to get from the people coming into, into Lakewood. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone else online?
Mayor Anderson, no one else has signed up to speak during this public hearing.
Is there anyone here present who wishes to speak on the 2021 Annual Development Regulations? Ask again, is there anyone here who wishes to speak on the 2021 Development Regulations? If so, please step forward to the podium and identify yourself. Going twice. Declare public hearing closed. Now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There is none, Mayor.
New business. Is there any new business to come before the council?
No, Mayor.
So we move to reports by the city manager, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. First off, I'd like to call up our economic development manager, Becky Newton, as well as Bob Stowe, who serves on our economic development team, to provide the council with essentially a primer or an update regarding tax increment financing. You might recall that during the last session, the Washington State Legislature finally adopted TIF, or Tax Increment Financing, through House Bill 1189. It's not pure TIF, but it is a form of TIF. And it is likely that there will be some value here in Lakewood to be able to use it as an economic development tool sometime in the future. But with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Newton and Mr. Stowe and have them give you kind of, again, a walkthrough, talk-through of what TIF is all about and its potential opportunities here in Lakewood.
Thank you, Mr. Caulfield. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm actually going to turn this over to Mr. Bob Stowe in just a moment, who has been working with us as a consultant on strategies for our Lakewood Landing project. And as Mr. Caulfield mentioned, we're excited that we have a tool to look at to spur economic development. I'd also like to acknowledge Mr. Morgan Shook, who is on Zoom with us this evening. He is a senior policy analyst for Econ Northwest and part of our team. It is a fairly complex tool, as you've probably noticed. And so I'd like to turn it over to Bob to take us through the presentation.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. It's very nice to be with you tonight. Really enjoyed working with your city manager, who I have just a great respect for, along with his very talented staff, who last several years on Lakewood Landing. But tonight, we're here to talk about the state's new legislation, tax increment financing, and how that relates to Lakewood Landing and potentially how that might benefit Lakewood So I know this is a very, you had a very busy evening. And so we're going to make our presentations brief. We'll try to finish within about 15, 20 minutes. If you have questions during the presentation, certainly we can address those at that time or we can wait till the end. But tonight, we wanted to give you just a brief overview of tax increment financing, or House Bill 1189. Talk a little bit about the scope of work that my firm and Morgan's firm have been involved with to evaluate tax increment financing for Lakewood Landing. Some of the dos and don'ts associated with this new legislation as cities start to advance their projects with TIF. And then next steps. And so what is TIF? It's a tool that allows public agencies to make really targeted infrastructure investments that spur economic development. It's utilizing the increment of new taxes that get created when that development happens. It's taking that new increment that would normally have been capped at 101% or at the existing rate of jurisdictions and simply applying that additional levy or that levy rate that's already been established in jurisdictions and other jurisdictions against that new increment. It's, it's so, in that sense, all the jurisdictions that were creating taxes and receiving taxes in, in the past are made whole. They'll continue to collect those same taxes. It's just the increment, the new growth that gets taxed, that's then used to fuel and fund the infrastructure investments. So this is an overview of tax increment financing in the state of Washington. It's designed for specific projects and not necessarily you build it and then development you hope might come later. City and county and port must adopt an ordinance designating the increment area that identifies the public improvements to be financed and whether bonds are issued or not. Cities cannot form any more than two increment areas. And it also has to be, those increment areas have to be the lesser of 200 million or 20% of your total AV in your community. You cannot add additional improvements or change the boundary of the increment area once adopted. And you also must include a deadline of when construction will begin after that increment area has been approved. Local governments may only receive TIF revenues for a period of times that's necessary in order to pay any of the costs associated with the public improvements. And if the local government finances, the public improvements, the increment area must be retired no more than 25 years after the adoption of the ordinance designating the increment area. You'll need to hold two public hearings exclusively on the tax increment project. You also need to submit to the State Office of the Treasurer for review. There's no rulemaking that the state treasurer office will have, but they will review that and may offer comment or input to jurisdictions. Must also publish the increment area and the ordinance in the newspaper and notice the county assessor and governing body of each task, taxing district, where the increment area is located. These are all of the various infrastructure investments that you can utilize the tax increment financing for, includes sewer and road construction, sidewalks, parking facilities, stormwater, et cetera. So city, county, or port must make a finding. And this is really the heart of TIF. It's sort of the butt for test. If not for the, 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 the investment in infrastructure, the development would not have occurred. So public improvements will encourage private investment or private development. Private development would not otherwise occur within a reasonable or foreseeable future. And an increased assessed valuation without public improvements is less than the increase in the assessed valuation that would occur from the proposed development with the public improvements. You also must prepare a project analysis. You also must prepare a project analysis that includes that description of the expected private development within the increment area, including a comparison of the scenarios with and without the proposed improvements. And also assess any impacts as well as a mitigation plan that addresses affordable and low-income housing, local business community, local school district and local fire service. So any of those impacts that touch upon those four areas, you'll need to assess and also likely have a mitigation plan associated with that. And particularly note, if 20% of assessed valuation in a fire district is impacted or increases the level of service to the increment area, you must negotiate a mitigation plan with that fire service. So this is how the, the math works and associated with the taxing and financing. The increment area is effective June 1. So in our case, since the law was just effective, increment areas cannot be formed until next June. Each taxing district will continue to collect its, its 1% plus the TIF growth. Applies to only the local property taxes, limited to the amount that's necessary to fund the public investment. In many cases, your levy amount may bring you additional dollars, but you can only collect the amount that's necessary to fund that public investment. And again, revenues are collected from all the jurisdictions that are with inside the increment area. They're made whole by the fact that they will continue to collect the same amount of revenue they have in the past plus the 1%. It's just that, it's just the increment area that gets taxed above the 1% and that's being used to fuel the, the infrastructure investments. And so when we looked at Lakewood Landing, we looked at the following as a scope of work and analysis. We had done some perform analysis on Lakewood Landing previously. So we took that perform analysis that we performed for the central core, which is about one-third of Lakewood Landing. And then we projected that same type of development over phases throughout Lakewood Landing. So basically took a full development potential of Lakewood Landing, put it into development phases over a 10-year period and then analyzed that of the tip, the type of TIF revenues that might be available to you. It's really just a high-level overview to determine really the viability for TIF and what benefit might arise from, from TIF. So I'm going to turn the presentation over to Morgan. He's going to walk you through the, the analysis that, that his firm performed.
Thank you very much, Bob. And I realize most of my slides here probably have way too many words on them. So I'll try to keep, keep it, keep it simple here and hit the high notes for you. So just a little bit about sort of how long you can run it. So I think Bob said here, you can only collect either the statutory limitations or to the extent that you need money to retire debt on projects. But here, right, it's no more than 25 years. And so we have to have something to base this on. And Bob will talk a little bit about our sort of assumptions for future growth at Lakewood Landing a little bit. But all to say here is we take a look at sort of that project, right? And remember, it's probably multiple phases, so it kind of happens in multiple years. And so we have to understand a little bit of what that future revenue stream looks like through time. So we can say as well, how much revenue is coming off of that? And how much debt could that support if we issue a bond in today or next year or something to build infrastructure? So our analysis here is really what we call kind of a cash flow analysis, right? Basically, we have to make some estimate about what the future may look like. Let's go to the next slide. So before we get to that, there are a series of tests that Bob laid out that the city has to conform to. The first one here is basically you can only have two active districts at any time. Right here, we're just assuming one. You can't have any overlapping increment areas. Again, we only have one, so we're not violating that rule as well. And then there's the rule here where it can't compromise comprise, excuse me, more than 20% of the city's assessed valuation or the lesser of 200 million. And so when we look at what we're assuming in the Lakewood Landing district boundaries, we have roughly $16 million worth of assessed valuation. That is only 0.2% of the city's overall valuation and well below that 200 million threshold. So we're, we're good there. The implication here, right, as one thinks about projects, one could probably entertain maybe a project area or that might be slightly larger. Again, the TIF has to sunset no later than 25 years after the first year, which the revenues start flowing. And our analysis is basically just looking at that full 25 years that revenue may flow. Think of it as kind of a way to think about the outer bound of how much potential revenue may be in that TIF district. Let's go to the next slide. So the other piece, and then we'll come back and talk about this a little more here, and you'll see why in a few slides, is that much like the city's 20% threshold, there is a, a condition here that no increment area can, will impact more than 20% of the assessed valuation within the fire protesting district. Here, that is West Pierce. Again, the district is a little bigger than the city, so that $16 million is only 0.12% of the fire district's total assessed valuation. And so you're under that piece. But there's also a condition in there that if a service agency's annual report demonstrates that an increase in level of service directly related to the increment area will drive costs for the fire district, then the local government that sponsors a TIF district must come back and negotiate a mitigation plan with them to address those levels of service impact. So we'll come back to that in a little bit. Let's go to the next slide. So, so as everyone probably here knows, right, every folks in the Lakewood area pay about $12 per every thousand dollars of assessed value on their home. But that total $12, right, is made up of property taxes from various jurisdictions, the city, the county, school district, the state portion, the port, you know, any, the fire district, right? It ranges sort of other special purpose districts. And so the state law here says, well, who property tax levy is actually part of the tax increment finance calculation? And we can get into this a little bit clearer in the next slide. But basically, the state school levy is exempt as well as any excess levy. So basically, any voted levy within those, those districts that levy the property tax. So let's go to the next slides. I think this will be clearer. And so what we have here is a table that shows the current breakdown of the $12.63 levy rate that currently applies within the Lakewood Landing area. And what you see there is, to the right of it, is basically, obviously, the state law exempts both portions of the state property tax for state schools. And then it exempts any excess levies. So almost by definition, the local school districts' levies are considered excess levies. And so they are exempt as well as the fire district bond voted levy of 16 cents as well as their operating levy of $1.3. So that, when we think about those exemptions, plus the state school exemptions, how much property tax levying capacity is available for the district, TIF district? So roughly about 30%, so about $4.75. And it's worth noting here that a large portion of that, right? Well, at least a doll, almost a dollar of that is the city's portion. But the remaining pieces, right, the major players are the main expense levy for the fire district as well as the county's various levies and then a few special purpose districts like the port and the flood control and sound transit. So let's go to the next slide. So I'm not going to go into this. This is a lot of detail. All this is, gives you a little sense of going back to what we, how we do these calculations. So if you follow those four red blocks up above, what we have to do is say, well, what's getting built, right? It matters whether a building is built in 2022, 2025 or 2030. It matters its valuation, right? Is it a sort of very expensive construction on a square foot basis? Or is it relatively inexpensive, right? That can vary whether you're talking about residential, commercial office, right? So we have to have some understanding of the, what the project is. We then have to, going back to that chart beforehand, we have to know how the rate is going to change for all those taxing jurisdictions, given how Washington calculates the levy and the levy rates. So we have to run a forecast for those pieces. And once we have all those first three, three pieces, we can then calculate how much money would be coming to the city for that tax increment finance area. So all of those words underneath there in smaller print basically articulate just a process for us to do that. So if you care about some of the details of doing discounted cash flow analysis, these few of those things will give you some of those, those pieces. Let's go to the next slide. So let me turn it over here to Bob, and he can talk you a little bit about that first box, about what exactly we are assuming and the timing of it.
So I'd mentioned earlier that we performed a perform analysis on the central core, then took some of those same projections and also applied them to the other areas of Lakewood Landing. Again, the central core, sort of the metal piece of Lakewood Landing, we've done quite a bit of analysis on. And so from that, we are projecting that residential units, about 760, would be built in the central core, along with 87,000 square feet of retail. And so we can perform in all of these scenarios, we could also perform additional sensitivity analysis by, by calling out a longer timeframe for development or even less development. But for purposes of this analysis, we use what our expectation is that will occur in the central core. The area to the south, the assumptions that we made, that 507 units could be built on that, very similar in terms of, 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 of scale as the central core and then 21,000 square feet. Analysis doesn't go into the costs associated with moving the washed-off facility off site. And then the last analysis or a projection we made was for the area to the north. And we are projecting 200,000 square feet sort of office, commercial, entertainment type uses. So we've taken those three areas, we've spread that development across basically a 10-year period. And again, we could have a longer timeframe or we simply can adjust the types of uses that go into the analysis as we look towards more sensitivity analysis of this development. But in this case, we looked at most of the central core being completed starting in 2023 and then finishing up in 2025. The south starting in 2028 and then the north finishing up in 2032. I'll turn it back over to you to talk about the analysis.
So, so all to say is that program of development, it drives sort of the investment in the area that is ultimately reflected in assessed valuations. And as anybody who's done probably any kind of home remodeling or anything in the construction, you know that construction isn't cheap. So that spread of parking, housing, commercial space is roughly $390 million worth of construction investments spread over that time period that we took a look at. And so why that matters, if you go to the next slide, it changes, oops, sorry. Oh, here we go. Here's the slide. Here's our 390 million. So if we go to the next slide, actually. So that 390 million drives how much assessed valuation ultimately is delivered to the TIF district. So in the blue bars there, you just see the amounts of new construction assessed valuation. So that is coincident with the amount of construction that you saw on the previous slide. But then we add that up cumulatively within the district. And by the time we're done constructing things in 2033, there's roughly $600 million of additional assessed valuation in the district. And so that number, right, is basically multiplied by that $4.35 of available levy rate to determine how much revenue is delivered to the TIF district. Okay, let's go to the next slide. So let's look at that table there on the right. And so there's a, three different ways I kind of want you to take a look at this. The first one is to say, okay, well, how much, give me how much money would be available in that TIF district. So that first column under allocation revenues is basically to say, okay, if that development happened on that schedule, that valuation or forecast is, on the levy rates is within reason, we probably would expect somewhere in the range of $40 million of revenue. In today's dollars, that's a $20, $21. So if you issued a bond, you could probably size it to roughly about $40 million in, to go out and accomplish the infrastructure projects that would be needed to support and catalyze development at the Lakewood Landing. Because much of the housing that is, was planned and was modeled within the sort of performa, assume some use of the city's multifamily property tax exemption, we would expect that not all that assessed valuation would be available because it would be exempt for that 12-year period. And so what you see there is really the delay at which the assessed valuation hits the tax increment finance area. So if we assume, this is just, just to give you some ballpark understanding because it's not clear how much assessed valuation would make it on for a couple of different reasons. But let's assume just 50% of the assessed valuation would hit that tax, would hit, eventually hit the tax rules because of the exemption, that lowers that 39.4 million to roughly $32.5 million. If basically all that assessed valuation, basically all that housing would potentially use the eight-year MFT, then that drops it down another $7 million to 25.6. So it just gives you a sense when the interplay, both the TIF district and potentially other incentives, how it may sort of impact total revenues. Okay, so one of the things here to keep in mind is the fire district is the kind of quote unquote, the most impacted in the sense that they are, their levy contribution drives much of the delivery of tax increment finance dollars. So that, so that number there in the first column under allocated revenues, roughly $19.6 million. And, and and so just going back to sort of this issue around sort of fire district mitigation, fire district impact, fire district contribution, is that there may be some need to make sure to do outreach and engage the fire district on the plans within that area and work out a service delivery plan for the, for the, for the TIF district. So right, one thing I think what we're doing here is really looking at just the property taxes, right? One of the things about Washington State tax policy is it kind of rewards cities for growing on two respects. One is basically the 1% limitation on the levy rate. You know, you can only exceed that by the amount of new construction. So one of these things is allows the city to grow its property tax a little faster than what otherwise. So that's always a bonus. The second piece, right, is the full value of construction, both materials and labor is taxable to retail rate. And when we look at the sort of the effect of that at the city's sales tax rate, you could think of it basically, well, that amount of development there generates another roughly $10 million in one-time sales taxes on construction as well as some ongoing taxes on some of the commercial pieces of it.
And before we advance, the deputy mayor had a question, I think, on, on this.
Certainly.
Except six-minute increments. But let me ask you the question here, on the allocation of revenues on the first, second and third columns, for purposes of a city looking to potentially bond the cost of infrastructure improvements, are we looking at, for example, in the first column, the 7.4 million that would go to the city as the max of our bonding capacity? Or do we look at the bottom figure for the total?
You should look at the bottom figure. I would say we've included the city portion in here for rest two reasons. It's not wholly clear in the legislation whether or not the city is required to also contribute its incremental revenues to, to the sort of TIF district. But even then, right, there's some fungibility in that with that respect.
Okay.
But yeah.
All the tax and jurisdictions would contribute their increased SPF in revenues for the projected development. Is that right?
Exactly. And that's that bottom line.
Got it. All right. Well, that makes more financial sense, potentially. Thanks.
Here, before I just turn it back to, to, to Bob here, what this, these last two slides do is just give you a little sense of what those cash flows look like. So when we discount it back to that, you know, to that 39 million, this is what those future cash flows look like. So, so obviously, it's more than 39 million, but because we have to discount it back to today's dollars, it's a, in order to deal with sort of the time value of money, that's just what those cash flows look like. Let's go to the next slide. And here, just to give you some sense here on where most of the value created in the TIF district is, most of it, if you, you know, obviously looked at the scale of development, most of that is in the central core because of the amount of housing and parking that's actually getting built there. Roughly 20 of that sort of, excuse me, 20 of that 32 million at 50% of the MFT. So basically, one out of every, two out of every $3 generated in the TIF district would come from the central core. The remaining pieces are really the south and the north comprising that, comprised of that last third. And obviously, that, next slide. And obviously, that next slide, as I alluded to there, that $10 million on sales taxes. One of the things to keep in mind here, right, is the nature of taxation for local jurisdictions is changing a bit. I mean, obviously, it's about who's there, what's built, and what types of activities they do that are taxable. And, you know, as buildings are constructed and occupy, they generate sales taxes, they generate utility taxes from and, and other types of sort of business taxes for, and as well as sort of, you know, things that follow people, like the gas tax distributions and other things. One of the things we're seeing, right, I think, is actually a lot more sales taxes actually coming from residential. I think the old sort of thinking was, for the most part, you know, households don't generate a lot of sales tax, so we've got to chase the big box stores with a more, with a greater and greater shift to e-commerce. We're seeing that shift a little bit in the way the sales taxes located to the point of delivery here. So we actually see housing being a larger component of cities' sales taxes today than we have in the past. So all to say here is you get the increment dollars, but there is also an increment of new taxes that are going to flow with people, people and businesses occupying those new businesses. All right, Bob, I'll turn it over back to you.
And just then to score the additional taxes, these are additional taxes that apply to multiple agencies and not just Lakewood. So these are the sales tax revenues that Morgan was speaking of that would come on an ongoing basis from that type of development that we're projecting in Lakewood Landing.
Thanks, Bob.
These are some do's and don'ts. Again, what we're recommending is carefully examining project tip revenues. You'll be responsible for any of the debt. It's, it's one thing to meet the butt four tests of the legislation, but it's certainly more important, I believe, to make sure that your development that you're anticipating incentivizing is actually going to develop so that you actually have the revenue stream in which to pay for that debt service. We want, we're advising clients to follow not only the letter, but also the spirit of the law, to really think strategically and act responsibly as this is a new, new legislation, new law, and certainly there'll be many eyes watching how public agencies implement. Make realistic projections about the ability to track private development with TIF. The way Washington State's TIF works is that it's not necessarily going to be the, the end all to your economic development expectations. It's going to be a tool, and it can be a very powerful tool in which to spur economic development, but likely it'll have to be stacked with other resources, grants, city funds, in order to make a project work. And recognize that there's likely going to be future criticism that private development would have occurred had not been for the investment that you're making. And key for jurisdictions is to identify very early in the process, any possible impacts to other jurisdictions. And certainly communicating with those other jurisdictions will be important as this will be a new legislation, new implementation. It's important that they all understand, all those jurisdictions understand that the, the initial, the taxes that they're going to be collecting will continue to be collected. And it's just simply the increment area that you're pulling off in order to utilize for the infrastructure investments. And again, to just finish up with, TIF again, won't be the answer to, to all your infrastructure needs. But again, can be a, a very early win and provide that really important seed funding to move a project forward. Next steps is that we're going to continue to work with the Lakewood Landing property owners as we evaluate development that's consistent with your, sorry, this flies, it's really just, well, not leave me alone. Consistent with the Lakewood Landing vision, and then subject to that development interest, the city may execute a development agreement setting for the type of development, the timing of that development, and the public infrastructure that's necessary for that development to occur. And TIF might be a possible funding source. We'll continue to evaluate the infrastructure needs for the Lakewood Landing, necessary to create the envisioned development. And we'll also continue to work with a Wash Dot and a state legislature to find a revenue source that can move them and relocate them off to another site that then allows the southern portion of Lakewood Landing to develop. And with that, we are certainly pleased and delighted to take any questions you might have, Mayor.
I have a couple of, the ones after the first one are serious. Appears you're getting ready for a presidential debate.
I, I think so, yes, right.
The why was the model of a 691 foot, square foot apartment used? And is there any indication, though we know we have a housing shortage, that there are 1,300 plus families who would like to live in a small apartment next to the freeway?
Yeah, that was simply an average based on the market demand when we were looking at the perform analysis last year. Again, then you'd have a mix of one, two, and maybe some three bedroom apartments, but the average was about 700 square feet.
And I see both the property, real property appreciation rate and inflation rate are under 2%.
Correct.
Which is lower than the historical average. What happens if that was to the equation, if those are adjusted for a higher rate, it's more in keeping with historical average?
You'd receive the benefit in that you'd have a higher amount of tax that you're able to, to peel off from the increment area in order to fund infrastructure investment.
So the point is, using those figures, assuming you could still borrow money for three and a half percent, if those conservative figures are are, as they appear, conservative, this is kind of the low end of the projection, it would be at the, the low end of what we could bond.
Yes. And remember that, that $40 million that was projected, based on that development scenario, you're only able to collect that which is necessary in order to satisfy the infrastructure investment. So if you issued debt for 20 million, you wouldn't be able to take advantage of that full, that additional 20 million. You may decide to issue debt for a shorter period of time and take a maximum amount, and then you could retire that project earlier and then form another tip. Because again, you're limited to two tiffs at any one time.
You may be able to pay it back in half the time if you get twice as much.
Exactly.
Mr. Whalen. Is there any possible scenario where the tax revenue generator from the TIF could be used to fund the acquisition of the Wash Dot facility as part of the infrastructure improvement or development of phase two?
The, the boundaries that the legislation set in terms of the types of facilities, infrastructure, it's not clearly defined that that would be a permissible use or permissible expenditure under the TIF legislation. And would, would be one that you want to proceed with very cautiously, given that it's not specifically identified in the legislation to utilize for another state facility.
I guess.
Not to suggest that couldn't be revised in the future years, but currently the way the the laundry list of infrastructure investments that are eligible, state facility or maintenance facility is, is not one of those.
So follow on to that, so that the expenditure would have to be in, inside a particular geographic zone?
Unnecessarily.
Or does it have to be related?
Has to be relatable, yes.
Another so, what I'm thinking is the possibility of acquiring infrastructure as opposed to buying property that you're giving to a private developer, you buy property from state, thereby freeing him up to sell the other one. So if we bought a site or improved a site that they moved to, we would be using it for the acquisition of public property as opposed to, like?
Potentially. Again, just looking at the list, and this is straight from the statute on, on the screen, is the laundry list of things that are eligible, which TIF revenues can be used for. And certainly, purchasing property for any one of those items is, is available. But purchasing property that could then be used for a different use, that's not necessarily cited here, is maybe, maybe difficult and will likely be faced with some challenges. But something we want to look at very carefully before proceeding, if, if that were the course of action.
One more and then let Mike go and then, oh, you want to go on that one? Oh, I, I, go into your last slide, Bob, real quick on the
Oh, the, the
Just kind of sequencing of when it makes good sense to do it, so.
Oh, sorry. Tell me when to stop.
Yeah, the very last one. The do's and don'ts. So, and the next steps, at what point in your professional recommendation, because this is all new, right? At what point does a project with the private development folks, when does it become sufficiently real for us to put our toe in the water and extend ourselves in looking to engage in this TIF financing?
Because this, Washington State's TIF legislation is oriented more towards projects rather than sort of general economic development purposes. I think once you have a development or a developer ready to develop and you, you know, through negotiations, through permits.
Maybe they've submitted their permit, they've done a little land use entitlements, they've actually got something ready to go, right?
Once they're ready to go, are very close to that, if not for the fact that there's X millions of dollars with the infrastructure investment that, you know, ordinarily and can't be supported by the development, organically would not have developed if not for the, the city's intervention with, with the TIF revenues.
So it becomes a bit of a chicken and the egg thing with the developer, because they're going to say, we'll put it all together and we'll submit for permits under the assumption that you will help with the infrastructure development and we're going to say.
There's some of that, but certainly I think there's, there's some tests that we would advocate that each jurisdiction or agency would look at. One is just, what kind of growth has your community seen over the last decade?
Okay.
And are you envisioning a different type of growth that you haven't seen? That's an indicator that there's some barrier in place. Now, maybe it's just that the fact that your lease rates, your rents are simply not there, they're not high enough to support new construction costs. Or it may mean that you have some significant infrastructure costs, you need streets, you need water, you need sewer, you need to have pilings. There's something that's preventing development from occurring, there's something from the market taking over and simply building what you have sort of promoted in your, in your regulations. And so those are things that you would look towards to try to test and verify the developers pro forma when he come in, when he or she comes in and says, look, I can only do X. If you want me to build what you're asking for, here are my numbers. I'll need, you know, X, Y, and Z completed in order to allow my development to go forward. And so, you know, we look at the internal rate of return of that development compared against other development in the area to know whether or not this is truly something that's necessary.
And on the retail side, it's one thing on the housing side where permits right now are kind of juicy, but it's another thing to build spec retail, which is pretty darn tough. So that community is going to have to come in with the plans, specs, maybe some, you know, pre-leasing under their belt before they kind of go in for a project this size, I would think.
Very, very true. I mean, many cases, you know, mixed use developments, the housing component is, is certainly much easier than the retail component. And sometimes retail is seen as sort of the lost leader to the, to the larger development, but I think it's, it's incumbent upon the jurisdictions to really just understand the development's challenges and then to offer some investments where it makes sense so that you can then, you know, catalyze development consistent with your vision.
Mr. Pransdner.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I just have some things so that I can understand what some things, some things that, that were not clear, but the taxes that would be available, which is the, the TIF increments, is, comes from even though the city would be the one passing the ordinance, it affects multiple taxing districts. Do those taxing districts have the authority or the ability to opt out?
No.
So on one of the slides, it looked like the taxing district that would contribute the most is the fire district. Even though it's below a some 20% number to, to do that, it's below the level at which we're obligated to make mitigation. And so we would then, and let's say that we do this and we sell bonds and we're going to move forward with a project because we've got some good assurances that the contract will move forward if certain infrastructure can be, can be, can be done. It doesn't have to be the 25 years, it could be something else, but it can't be more than that.
Correct.
So if the one of the allowable expenses is parking, and in the Lakewood, in, in, landing idea, there's a lot of conceptual drawings that show parking here and parking there and being able to do that. But most of it looks like it's going to be on property that eventually will not be public property. It will be parking on property that will belong to the developer or a subsequent owner after the developer transfers it. Does the statute clear that that's not a gift of government funds to a private entity to build them a parking lot?
Well, you, you could build, these are, these are owned public facilities. So that laundry list of infrastructure would continue to be owned and operated by the municipality. So if you were to build a parking structure that could accommodate the development's use, as well as other public interests in the area, that would still continue to be a public structure. That wouldn't be gifted or provided exclusively for the use of that development. But they could access it, much like any parking structure that is built in downtowns or elsewhere, to try to incentivize development. But that is one of the eligible activities or investments that a municipality could make or an agency could make is to build a public parking structure.
So in a complicated development scheme of where there are multiple buildings and some of them are mixed use buildings that have residents and there are there are parking spaces expected to be there for the, for the residents. But that if the, essentially, they are, even if it's a parking lot, if the parking lot remains a public place.
Yes.
Then, then, then you could do that and and with that comes the responsibility to maintain it.
That, that's correct.
Okay.
Councilmember, you mentioned whether or not an agency has the ability to opt out, and I replied, no. But you did also raise an excellent point regarding the fire district. And if a fire district, again, hits that 20% threshold, there is a requirement that you'll need to have a mitigation plan with that, with that fire agency.
So if I'm going to look at it from a perspective of somebody other than the city, let's say the library district, okay? And they would take a look at when we were to enact such a district, there would be a baseline assessed valuation of the property that the they would be able to collect their levy rate against that property plus 1% every year. That typically, sometimes in order to, to, to do the 1%, because property valuations go up, a lot of times levy rates go down, even to capture the 1%. But in this particular case, or in case of all the districts, the assessed valuation wouldn't go up for their basic levy rates. So they would, so, so citizens would see base rate that, that's there. So even though the assessed value of their property went up. Okay. The library district would only do, would, would continue to charge them what they were, and then 1% more, and then 1% more, and then 1% more, and anything over that would go into this fund. Are we ever in the future, under any obligation to reimburse the library district for funds that they didn't receive?
No, because it's not funds necessarily they didn't receive. No, because it's not funds necessarily they didn't receive. If development would never have happened, if not for the infrastructure investments, which is utilizing this increment of new taxes, they would continue to receive the same amount that they're receiving under this scenario, which is the current, their levy rate applied against the assessed valuation of the property plus a maximum of 1%. That's, that's the scenario that exists today. They'll continue to see that same type of growth. The only thing that's different is it's simply removing out the new construction. Right now, new construction is applied to everyone's property tax rate for that next year, and then it goes away. Then it becomes a part of the 1% cap. What this is doing is taking that new construction and it doesn't limit the cap within the increment area longer. And so whatever that growth is, is what the levy rate is, is taxed against. There is no 1% in the increment area. But for all the other taxing districts that are participating in the increment area, they're still receiving the same amount of taxes that they would have received had the development, had the increment area not been formed in the first place.
So a current.
But when the increment area is expired or when the debt is paid, if there is debt or the public investment is paid, they all receive, of course, all of that, all of that increment area, all of that becomes part of that, that taxing jurisdictions base at that point.
So, excuse me, Mike, maybe I can simplify it. Does the taxing districts, such as the library district, the fire district, these special taxing districts, get any benefit from the increase in, in assessed valuation on the base during those years or are they fixed at the beginning?
They, as I understand, Morgan, if you're still on the line, they still receive the benefit on the base.
Well, does that base, is there an inflationary factor on that base and the same way it would be if there had been no development or is it fixed at a dollar amount for the 25-year period?
Well, it's not fixed on dollar, but it is fixed on a 1% cap of the previous year.
So they don't get the, they don't get the, any advantage of the appreciation of the underlying property that they would have received?
That's correct, that's correct, outside of the 1%. Morgan, is that?
Yeah, yeah, a different, I mean, our property tax system is a bit, can be a bit obtuse. So the way to think about it is, right, is from a taxpayer perspective, if you thought about it, nothing really changing about our property tax system, right? But for the purposes of TIF, think of it as basically creating two assessed valuation bases that then a portion of that assessed valuation base continues to go to the jurisdiction and the other piece goes. My understanding of the, of the way the legislation is written is basically it is fixed in time. So, so, so basically there's no inflationary piece on the base that allows them to grow. So if they were collecting taxes on that 100 million and that was the basis for the TIF going forward, it's 100 million for however long the TIF district goes. And so all that increased assessed valuation will go to the TIF district at a time, then it's returned to the original taxing jurisdiction.
Thank you.
So, so if I understand, is that, and let's just say that I own a property in the, in the, in the district. And this goes into effect. And in the first year, no development actually happens on my property. But the assessor down on 35th Street changes the assessment, assessed value of my property. So that increase in assessed value actually goes into the TIF calculation, not into the taxing district's calculation in terms of setting their levy rate. Is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct. And so, so I think if you're asking a leading question, why wouldn't we just draw a district and just capture all the, you know, appreciation from inflation? And the challenge is, is that there is, there are two kind of pieces. One, there's a big opportunity cost, right? Because you're only limited to two increment areas at any given time. And the second piece here is, or it's actually three pieces. The second piece is that you have the thresholds, right? The 20, 20% of the city's assessed valuation base or, or lesser of, sorry, lesser of 20% or 200 million. And the third piece, I think, as Bob alluded to, is this if but for piece, right? So I think, you know, one could sort of take a sort of, say, Machiavellian sort of approach and say, why don't we just draw a big district and just capture all the assessed valuation and use that to fund our infrastructure? I think that is pretty clear that is outside of the intent of the law. So, so this is kind of comes back to, I think, I can't remember which council member asked this, is basically how do you time this, right? And I think as Bob was saying, you really want to try to make it as coincident to when you know real projects are happening. And the value is, one, you get sort of the increase in just the natural rate of inflation, but you also get the valuation of the actual new construction that is happening.
Okay. I'm looking at your slide 29, implementation dos and don'ts. And one of the bullets says, early outreach to special purpose districts beyond what the statute requires. First of all, what does the statute require? And, and what sort of beyond are you recommending to us?
What we're recommending is that because this is a new legislation and so that each entity may react differently, maybe they have a different understanding of how the legislation will work. I think early communication, early outreach would prevent a lot of sort of implementation problems. The statute simply requires a notice, maybe, maybe multiple notices, but I think when you're starting to form a TIF and you're, you're, you know it's going to impact some of those taxing entities or you know the entities have significant contributions that they're going to be making as a result of the increment area, I think it would be incumbent upon the agency that's forming the increment area to have conversations with that agency and then address any concerns that they might have.
And, and then the statute allows us to have, in the city, two such areas.
Yes.
That, given the timeline is different for the north zone as opposed to the core and the, you know, could, could we have two areas that abut each other but that start at different times?
So long as you had no more than two, yes.
Mayor, that's all I can puzzle enough to ask.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a, just a few questions and some pretty, so these would be general obligation bonds that we would sell, correct? So they are general obligations of the city?
Well, tip, the legislation doesn't require you to issue debt, but, and so whether it's, you know, general obligation bonds, LTGO bonds, short-term financing, simply paying, you know, cash because, you know, from one year of the TIF revenues, that's, that's, all of that's up to the jurisdiction forming the TIF area.
Okay, so you're not, so it's not just to support debt. But back to the deputy mayors, this idea, I have written down simultaneous construction. Is that what you usually see in these things or is it, does the, do the entities, the municipalities do their work first, meaning, I would, and then my, my next question is typically, typically really, is it sewer, water, sidewalks, all of the above, or what's kind of a typical thing for this type of development?
And on your first question, who, who does what first? I mean, I've seen where this could be something that's purely led by the development community. The development community produces the pro forma and then the city verifies that information. Also, what most likely would have some, also investigation and due diligence by the city, you know, what type of development has been occurring without any, any city intervention? Is the development consistent with your vision? You know, what's been your own analysis to indicate that what the developer is asking for is realistic? Your second part of the question, I'm sorry.
What do you usually see? Where, where do most of these things go?
Yeah, I mean, generally, it's, it's things that, that are outside of what can be readily produced by the marketplace. So, you know, most development, you know, sidewalks, landscape strips, you know, the general type of development, infrastructure, they're able to support with the, the rents and the leases that they're able to, to obtain. Assuming that your marketplace has that type of development and it produces those kinds of rents against the construction cost. So what we're talking about is really, it's where you have no streets at all. It's vacant property or you have significant infrastructure, water and sewer, or maybe the soil conditions are such that it requires a lot of piling or it's some environmental remediation that needs to take place that if, if you were waiting for the private development to come in and clean up that property, probably wouldn't have happened. They'll just go somewhere else where it's much easier to develop and costs are well-known.
So I'll, so I'll give you an example. So it would be a newer development and so it would have to meet current surface water management standards.
Yes.
Meaning, and it's a big, I mean, if, if it's done the way you project, show here tonight, there'd be a lot of runoff. So the standard would be to try to keep that on site. Would, would that be something that we would cover on something like that?
Generally, probably not. I, I look at, the TIF revenues are things that are, really can't be supported by the development community. In other words, if it's something that exists pretty much anywhere in the state, you're not unique in Lakewood versus Spokane. So the marketplace, I mean, if that's what the market, if that's what the regulatory environment is requiring, that's the same for everyone. So doubtful that that would be sort of what I would categorize as a, or something that you want to put in your, in your TIF bucket. You'd want to focus those funds on things that are significant infrastructure investments that you know have created this barrier that is preventing the type of development that you've been envisioning.
Okay, so it's really specific to that project.
Very specific.
You have to understand what that project is bringing, why nothing has occurred on that specific site really is what we need to
Yes.
determine.
And generally, it's probably going to be related to environmental issues, transportation issues, and then utility issues.
Okay. So the calculations every year, because Morgan went through the calculations. This would be brand new to the, to our assessor. Who does those calculations and who adjudicates disputes?
The.
And we would be the dispute person, right? We would say, hey, we, we think you did the calculations wrong because we think we could be paying more against the bonds this year.
So Department of Treasury has the opportunity to review your ordinance.
Okay.
The only dispute framework within legislation is the court system. So there's no other body that would dispute the calculations. Presumably, the agency would work with, again, another reason for the early outreach, is to work with the assessor to make sure that they understand what's happening. They'll certainly be able to know the new development, just like when new development happens anywhere, they're able to capture that on the assessment rolls. And so now it's simply capturing that and then redistributing that increment area back to the jurisdiction.
Okay.
And then it's, again, it's limited. They only distribute the amount that it's necessary to satisfy your, your infrastructure cost, whether it be by debt or by other means. And most presumably, it's always going to be by debt. I mean, that's sort of the whole nature of TIF is, is trying to provide for the infrastructure, which generally is costly and needs to be paid for over time, providing that upfront so that development can go forward.
So there's the initial, our initial legislation, there's what goes to the state. And so the state, the treasurer is going to look at that and say, okay, here's the scope of your project. So it'll be, when we send something to the state, it'll be a defined, not just a defined area geographically, but a defined project and a defined project from, from the developer's standpoint and the defined project from our standpoint.
Yes, because there's a series of findings that you'll need to make, sort of that but for analysis, but for your infrastructure investment, your development wouldn't have happened. The increment area, the ordinance, how you've assessed all those various sort of groups of housing, retail, business, fire. And so you'll need to come up with findings against all of those areas and that's what you'll submit for the state's review. And then they have so many days to review. The legislation doesn't speak to any rulemaking authority that that agency has, only that they'll be able to offer some input to you.
Okay. So I'm going to ask you a couple of questions and let me know if they're not fair questions that you can answer. I'm assuming you've got, I mean, you've come in here tonight, you and Morgan, and about, talking about tax increment financing. And I realize that it sounds like the Washington law is a little bit unique. So I'm looking for the sweet spot, right? That, what types of projects have worked really well with tax increment financing? And then on the flip side, where have these things gone haywire?
Sure. You know, the only, the closest thing we have in Washington State to TIF is the formerly and still in place is LIFT, Local Infrastructure Financing Tool, sometimes referred to as TIF Lite. City of Bothell was an award recipient for the LIFT. It provided $1 million. It was really, mechanically it was set up differently, it was based on a sales tax credit that, that was offered. Basically, it was $1 million for that city for 25 years that it bonded against. Bothell had close to $150 million worth of investments that it had identified were necessary for its downtown revitalization. So that LIFT award was just a small increment, but it was very important in that it was an early success because it provided that seed money that then gave the jurisdiction, the community confidence and motivation that it can collect the next amount to proceed with the next project. So I think TIF can work much in the same way here in Washington. I think by design, it's not meant to generate probably a sufficient amount of revenue to fund all the infrastructure that may be necessary in a project, but it's probably, it will be significant in that it'll create some early wins and some confidence level for that jurisdiction that it can proceed to the next level and then maybe stack it up against some other funds that you're able to acquire. Where it goes haywire is that, and this has always been a constant criticism across the country, any TIF is that, well, how do you know that had it not been for your infrastructure investment, the development would have happened anyway? And so all you really did was just gave a handout to the development community when that development would have happened. And so that's when it's, I think that's when it's incumbent upon the jurisdictions to really understand kind of the financial analysis, do its own homework, is due diligence and determine, is this really something that's necessary to get the kind of development that we're asking? And sometimes it's simply a matter of, again, what's happened over the last 20 years in your community? You're asking for something different, there's, there's a reason why. Maybe it's the regulatory environment. Maybe it's the fact that you just can't collect enough rents to pay for new construction. Or maybe it's because you have, you know, 30 or 40 million dollars in infrastructure need that you're asking the development to pay, he simply can't do it because the rents aren't there. So I think you have to look at all those in, in sort of a comprehensive fashion to determine if it's, if it's a wise decision to use this increment of taxes in order to spur the kind of development you want.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Hope you don't end thoroughly confused, but it seems like it might work. Thanks for your help.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you very much. And thoroughly enjoyed working with, again, with, with your city manager and his talented team and on this project. And more work to be done. And of course, to determine if TIF is the right tool for Lakewood Landing, but it's, it's another tool that you have in your, your toolkit, if you will, that you might be able to use.
Mr. Brandstetter, one more.
I had one more question I wanted to ask. Does the statute say anything with respect to the 1% if the legislature, as they are repeatedly being asked, eliminates that 1% as a increase limit and substitutes it with an inflation rate or a higher number? Does the statute automatically assume any changes like that by the legislature or is 1% in the statute?
Good, good question. I may need to go back and look at the language again. However, I do believe that the way the statute is constructed, that if for some reason the 1% now became 2, I think the 2% would be the, the applicable threshold within the tax increment financing scheme. But I need to check the, the language. I think it just simply refers to, because it's not, it's not changing any of the existing regulations regards to the 1%. It's simply referencing. It's simply referencing that area of the law. If it changed the 2%, 2% would then become the cap. Anything above the 2% would be part of the increment area.
So it just seems that once we'd enter into this and we assume some debt based on what we envisioned, the TIP increment being, and then it, and then all the other districts, including the city, were able to go from 1% to 2%. That 2% would then go to the, to the taxing district and not be available for the debt. If that, if that's, so it's
I think we need a bond attorney for that. Sound transit, once you issue debt, it's virtually impossible to impair the funding source.
I, I think it, it does speak to making sure that you may have $40 million coming out of your TIP area, but it'd be somewhat risky to bond against that entire 40 million. You'd want to have something less, more of a comfort level. Because again, this is all based on projections of when development will occur. And if you're issuing debt, regardless of what development happens in that increment area, you're still responsible for that debt service associated with that, with that bond.
Anything further? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor. And counsel, next up, I'd like to call on our long range and strategic planning manager Tiffany Spear to give you an update on some conversations she had with Tacoma and Pierce County last Friday afternoon regarding the partnership, potential partnership with the Low Income Housing Institute or Elhi to acquire the Comfort Inn at 82nd and Hosmer for the use as an emergency shelter. There is an emerging opportunity for Elhi to apply for and potentially secure a $3.8 million state grant to help buy down the acquisition of this facility, which would benefit all three of our respective agencies. I understand that their deadline for the submission is this Thursday. And so what they're looking for is they're looking for a letter of support from the three agencies as well as some kind of a commitment for future funding as it relates to the operation of it. And we have a recommended draft letter that we'd like to share with you this evening and to get your okay on that or not okay, depending upon which way you want to go. But with that, Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And once again, Tiffany Spear with the Community and Economic Development Department. So much of what I was going to share was summarized quite well by the city manager, but I'll go through this in a little more detail. Pierce County, Tacoma and Lakewood have been talking about the purchase of the Comfort Inn at 86th and Hosmer for about a month now. Tacoma and Pierce County have been talking about it longer. But you've been aware that Lakewood has been asking questions and offering the potential participation of its ARPA dollars as well in order to then have a certain number of beds reserved each day for Lakewood individuals. The intent as of right now with the purchase of the inn by Lehi, Low Income Housing Institute, is to have that closed by, the sale to close as soon as possible. And then the shelter opened by November 1st of this year. In terms of dollars, the total purchase amount is roughly 10 million. City of Tacoma committed up to 5 million. Pierce County has committed 5 million. And then Lakewood has discussed committing 1 million toward the purchase. The discussion with the other jurisdictions has been clear that Lakewood is expecting that any dollars put toward this would be in exchange for those reserved beds. And as Mr. Manager just mentioned, there is now an opportunity this week for Lehi to seek a State Department of Commerce Rapid Capital Housing Acquisition Grant, which would reimburse some of the money that is being offered at this point by the three jurisdictions as a bridge loan for purchase of that hotel as soon as possible. And what that would turn into are dollars coming back to those jurisdictions that could then turn around and be used again for ARPA eligible dollars. So the deadline for this, the acquisition application is August 5th, which is why we're before you this evening. A couple of things that were asked of Tacoma and Lehi that we've now received responses to that may be of interest to the council. First of all, it's 120-bed shelter through 2023 is the intent. There would be administration offices there on site and the operating funds would be dealt with through emergency services grants, mental health tax, maybe ARPA dollars. Beyond 2024, the intent is to convert the hotel to permanent supportive housing for at or below 50% of the area median income. There is the cost estimated for rehabilitating and converting the hotel. And then, once that was done, there would be about 80 permanent units with, again, administration on site. What we're talking about right now is 91 furnished rooms. It turns into, again, those 120 beds within about 85 rooms. The contract is at 8.8 million with an appraisal of 11.1. Total acquisition budget, as I mentioned, is roughly 10 million. Financing contingency, as I mentioned, is September 15th and closer no later than October 31st. In terms of how it will be run, as of now, there's been an estimation of about 1.6 million a year on the operating budget side for all of the units, for a full-time project manager, a shelter organizer, three full-time case managers, providing one meal per day, a live-in janitor, and then there'd be key holders that were among those that are living there as well. There is the fact that, A, this is something that's permitted outright within the zoning on site. So there will not need to be a rezoning process. There, there has been discussion and there continues to be discussion with the City of Tacoma's building official and building department to make sure that this is following all requirements in terms of public safety and occupancy for the use of an, as an emergency shelter. Building permit will be required, as mentioned there. The cost of the acquisition and rehabilitation of these units is about $100,000 per unit lower than it would be if it was new construction. The fire marshal, from what I understand, there was discussion with the fire marshal today. I don't know the outcome of that. No need to rezone, as I mentioned. And then there is discussion at this point of having about 120 bins for storage of occupants' belongings on site. While it's an emergency shelter, there are some requirements listed here that the building official has identified. So there will be some work needing to be done once the property is purchased. And then again, for permanent supportive housing, there would need to be some additional construction completed. But that's being identified now, so the preparations can be made. And when the time comes to convert from emergency shelter to permanent supportive housing, things would be hopefully done as quickly as possible. So it is recommended that the letter which was provided to you on your iPads earlier this afternoon be approved by the city council. If you need it to be read to you, I apologize, I don't have it electronically with me. Yes, I do.
Questions from Ms. Spear? I'll think, people are thinking of them. I'll back up a little on this project. This originally came to Pierce County as a request from the city of Tacoma, which had been approached by Lehi. And the original request was for one-half of the acquisition costs as a one-time expenditure, with Tacoma picking up the operational costs out of the funding source that it had identified internally. There were varying versions of why that changed. But in kind of a bait and switch, suddenly it became county, you, we want you to pay for half the operational costs. And oh, by the way, now we want you to contribute to Tacoma's policing costs because the area is under policed. And then it went from, it'd be nice if Lakewood contributed a million dollars to the capital expenditure to, we want you to contribute to the operational cost to. So at present, there, on a county level, there's willingness in the executive department to advocate for the capital expenditure. And the ongoing expenses have been discussed. But I don't know that the, the council hasn't approved anything. And I don't know that the executive has advocated for providing a share of ongoing improvements. There certainly isn't, is money in the county budget for housing like that. And in the short term, ARPA funds could be used. So that's a consideration here too, that ARPA funds can be used for operational aspects of this. So it wouldn't rate our CDBG funds. But that's kind of where it is. And there, you see some of the costs involved there. For example, there are half or more of the rooms have traces of meth. And so it's not uncommon in lower-end motels. So they have to wipe them down. I don't think it's contaminating, it isn't a contaminated site to my knowledge. But the question I think we have to answer is for two. One, do we want to commit to the million? And two, to what extent do we want to actually or impliedly commit to ongoing operational expense contributions?
And Mr. Mayor, if I could, the letter is now broadcast on, I believe, all of your screens. The way it's written as of now, it identifies the parcel that the Comfort Inn is located on. It states that the city would be providing 1 million with conditions for the, for the purchase of the hotel. And 380,000 or 1/10th of the total purchase price would be a bridge loan coming back to the city, assuming Lehi were to get its state acquisition grant back because 1 million is 1/10th of the total purchase price. So the, the way this letter is drafted, it is all 1/10th of a share throughout for the City of Lakewood. So there would be 380,000 coming back, assuming they got that grant from the state, as I mentioned. Then during the time that it was operated as an enhanced shelter, there would be a total of 120 beds. 1/10th of that would be 12 beds. That's the request for those that would be reserved every day for Lakewood individuals until a certain time of night. And if they weren't occupied by Lakewood individuals, they would be open for others. And then there's also some criteria on the bottom of the first page and on to the second talking about the conditions that the city would put forward initially at least. Those beds, the approval of the development and operations budgets, consistency with the City of Lakewood's five-year consolidated plan and 2021 consolidated annual action plan, the income and affordability levels identified in the multifamily lending term sheet. And then if there are additional requirements that the City of Lakewood would present, once they were able to see a little more detail with the construction and operational costs.
Can you roll us for a second, maybe?
Sure.
Yeah. Mr. Whalen?
So I've heard through the ether a little bit that some of the proponents would love to make sure that Lakewood continues to contribute to either operational costs or safety considerations and patrolling, for lack of a better term, in that particular area. Of course, it's not our jurisdiction, so we wouldn't necessarily patrol. So what do we understand to be the request for that kind of assistance?
It hasn't been, it hasn't been explained in great detail or agreed to. There is a meeting scheduled now for the 18th of this month to talk about operational costs and procedures. So as of today, we're simply trying to get to the point of them being able to request this loan that could in turn reimburse jurisdictions. And if you were to look at the, the way if this all went through as, as considered in this letter, you'd, you'd put the million dollars out initially. 380,000 comes back. 163,000 would be the, the amount needed for the 1/10th of the annual cost for two years. And so you would still come back with additional funds for Lakewood to use otherwise.
Okay. And just anecdotally, but we reserve 12 emergency shelter beds for Lakewood individuals. So who identifies who's eligible and is able to get use of those beds? Which, which agency here in Lakewood? Is it LASSA? Is it somebody else that's on, on the ground?
It's up to the city, I'm sorry, it's up to the city to identify where those referrals are going to come from. Pierce County is going to require it through coordinated entry. The City of Tacoma does not want to use coordinated entry because they apparently have some concerns with what are some of the criteria for eligible people for beds. But the City of Lakewood, whether it's through the Lakewood Police Department, whether it's through LASSA or Greater Lakes or Comprehensive Life Resources, for instance, we would just need to identify who that's going to be.
And anecdotally, do we know how many are out there in any given month or week that might possibly qualify for this kind of housing here in the City of Lakewood? Do we have any feedback on that from our citizens advisory board that deals with?
I can't give you that right now, but I can certainly follow up, get that information.
Kind of nice to know what kind of a dent we hope to be making in the issue if we were to go forward with this. I think it's, you know, important. I'm always concerned about Lakewood families that are homeless as opposed to individuals. I mean, we have lots of need for all sorts of housing, but it's challenging if there isn't any beds for Lakewood families that just find themselves in a challenge, whether it's a mother and a child, or two children, or a mother and a father and a child, or whatever. That's challenging.
And there are rooms that do have multiple beds within them. So that could be where those rooms would go. But again, more details to be negotiated.
Yeah, I'd love to know that anecdotal stuff, you know, how many we would have at any given month that would potentially avail themselves of the 12 beds. Thank you.
Ms. Farmer?
So in the letter, it talks about the reservation of 12 emergency shelter beds for Lakewood individuals. Doesn't address the conversion of 12 shelter beds to permanent, 12 shelter permanent. It's too late, I can't talk, permanent housing.
Thoughts? The reason that it's drafted this way is my interpretation of your discussion as counsel was this was simply to purchase this and, and have use of it as the shelter. Once it's permanent supportive housing, the way it's being discussed is the Pierce County Housing Authority has Section 8 vouchers that can be transferred and used at that location going forward. I don't know if the City of Lakewood be, would have people that could access those vouchers and then be assigned places at the shelter permanently, once it's converted. But I can certainly do some additional research. The, the discussions about what's going to happen come 2024, when that conversion happens, are still very much up in the air, including with Lehi. So there's opportunity, if the council wants to do so, to say, hey, we want to continue to support this and we want to continue to have space available for Lakewood residents, or Lakewood individuals, I should say.
That's my feeling that if we're going to put money into this venture, then there needs to be some sort of long-term outcome for Lakewood.
So there's a, there's an excellent chance that by the time it's converted, there will be a county-wide housing authority. That Tacoma and Pierce County housing authorities will be combined by that time. Mr. Brandstetter?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yeah, yeah. I'm in favor of the letter as it's drafted. I think that there are some, the positive aspects to it is it's, it involves us in a regional partnership that is long-term, that's consistent with our, just having joined the, the shape group and, and going forward and is a, is a tangible project. I, and that, and that goes for that initial investment to secure the building. And I think that limiting our operational element to only the period of time when it's operating as an emergency shelter, because that's the time in this facility will have the greatest utility to Lakewood. Quite honestly, when it stops being an emergency shelter, we'll be back in the situation of where we got to figure out, what do we do for an emergency shelter that serves our geographical area? And that's, so this is not the long-term solution to that. But once it stops being a shelter, it becomes a revenue producer for the LIHI. When it becomes, you know, the, one of those supportive housing groups. And so there, there shouldn't be any consideration on our part to do that, that to the, and, you know, they'll, they'll have to make their business model work after it does that. I guess, Ms. Spear, I had a question of, was there, is there any contingency if it's? I guess, Ms. Spear, I had a question of was there, is there any contingency if it, if they can't make the conversion from an emergency shelter to a supportive housing on the timeline? We're not being asked to commit beyond the, the December of 2023.
No, and see if I can find it in the language here. You'll see in the one, excuse me, let's see. In the fourth paragraph there, it says, during the first phase, or when it's an emergency shelter, the city will provide 163 in annual operating and services funding for two years or through December 23rd from such searches as. So that could be clarified further as, or just through December 30th, excuse me, December 2023, whichever is earlier, rather than two years? Or if, if the language stands and it's understandable, we can leave it there. But that's what that sentence is intended to do, is say it's only for the period that it's an emergency shelter through December of 23.
My, thank you. So, so Ms. Mayor, I'd give my nod to consensus to send this letter. It is time-sensitive.
Yes.
Anybody have any objection to sending the letter? Doesn't appear we do.
Thank you.
Coffield?
Nothing else in my end, Mayor.
Any questions for the city manager? Go to council comments. Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the North Lake Wood Neighborhood, I attended the North Lake Wood Neighborhood Association meeting on Tuesday night. It was virtual. It was, they are going to, the next meeting will be September 28th, and they will be going in person, but they need to find a new location. So there wasn't, they were in search of, but they had some ideas, but there was not confirmed at that point. They are interested in being involved with the discussion on the Western State Hospital. So they have some concerns there and would like to be involved and notified when those public outreaches are going to happen. So I told them that they go out in the mail, so we should get those. They are interested in starting a little pantry in the neighborhood, but nobody wanted it in their backyard, so they were struggling with trying to find a way to do it. And I was able to connect them with Mr. Bob Zowinski, that has a little pantry in Lakewood. And I talked to Mr. Zowinski, and he's more than willing to have them come onboard with them, so they could work together, make the little pantry a little bigger pantry, perhaps. So hopefully that works out. Mr. Zowinski is traveling at this point, so I let him know that they needed to be patient to wait for him. The guest speaker for that night was, her name was Lonnie, she was from Pierce Transit. And she was saying that they're in desperate need for bus drivers. So anybody that needs a job, can drive a bus, they waiting for you there. Let's see. I also attended the Warriors of Change at Culapak High School that was put on by communities and schools, and it was very well done. The students were practicing their communication and leadership skills. And I, Mr. Brandstetter did pass out some of the notices, and you can see, they really went to work on this. And so I'm really impressed with the, the ideas that they have. And one of the things that really caught my attention was that they talked about why there's nothing in Lakewood for the young people to do. When we talk about the Boys and Girls Club, and that transportation is an issue. So we, they're trying to figure out what we can do, or how they can set up a program of, of least fantasy as to what we can do to help them to get to the events that we put on for, that would be of interest to them. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bulkey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple items, I went to the EFN, opening of their new offices, and I know some other folks were there, so they can speak to that. It sounds like they've got some other things in the works or in planning and that we, we may want to participate in, in the future. Looking forward to tomorrow night. I think, maybe it's because the weather's always good, but National Night Out is really well-done in, in Lakewood, and so I'm looking forward to seeing folks out and about tomorrow. I have looked at this, and I think the ideas are very nice. The, the community garden proposal, which they have actually, it sounds like talked to the school district that's on their property. And I think the games and grub proposal is an interesting proposal, too. So that will be interesting to see if our department has any ideas about that when they take a look at it. So, thank you.
Mr. Brandstetter?
Yet, I, I did have the occasion to go to the ribbon cutting for the new building at the Emergency Food Network. But beyond that, also to look at their campus, as they call it, that has warehouses and, and has a parking lot of, of trucks that don't move that they get, but other than the, from the parking lot to the warehouse and back and forth, because they're used for storage. And that, and that they have long-term plans to do. But they were very complimentary of the, the assistance the city gave them, particularly in the permitting to be able to expedite, using the, the funding that they got to, to, to build a, an enhanced and productive administrative area for them to, to handle the growing, growing work that they have there, to be able to go and do that. And they also have really a great community garden there, that they have, you know, one of their folks from their, from their farm that comes in and has a, you know, a, a, a garden that's there, that they manages to do that with a, with a table next to it, that every couple of days, they harvest things and they put it on the table. And while we were there, there were folks from, just from the neighborhood, who came by and picked up some squash, or some corn, or some beans, or whatever, whatever happened to be there. And they said that it's, people are very disciplined, nobody comes and takes everything off the table, you know, because people know that it's going to be something on the table every day. And that, that's how they, how they work, work to manage it, to be able to go and do I did get a chance to get down into the new Public Safety Communication Center that South Sound 911 is partially moved into, and, and not operational for communications work yet, but it's going off. And it's a, it's a, a very well-engineered and designed building, and it's going to be a good place to work for people who, quite frankly, need a good place to work because they have stressful, stressful work to do. And then it goes on and on. And I was at the Warriors of Change presentation and listened to the groups that did that. And I was struck that some of them had some corresponding things to some of our work. There was one group that was very focused on looking to see how they could, could deal with, with, with non-motorized transportation, or transportation for students to, to get to, to some of the few things that there are for high school-age students to go to from, from doing that. And we're going to be working on a non-motorized transportation plan, and so that would be a group that we could identify as a stakeholder in terms of, of, of working on that. And there was a community, community gardens group that spoke about the need, but also about how they felt they could harness student manpower to make a community garden work in the, in the neighborhood of, of the high school and the, in, in, in the town center. And felt, felt that they could do that, so they were going on. And then there was another group that was very interested in improving police-youth relations, had ideas similar to some of the things. So I think that there's some synergy for them with the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition to move forward. So it was a, you know, another group of people that I'm always running into that make me optimistic about the future of that, of, of folks that think that good change is, is possible and that they can be a part of it. That's all of that, Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Farmer?
I've been having some interesting conversations during the heat with a lot of residents who have small children and who have to leave our city to go find a spray park or a place that's not quite as crowded as some of our lakes. And so I'm, I'm anxious to, eager to continue our conversations about a downtown park and what that possibility, what that might look like. That's it from me.
You're not next, huh?
Oh, you're not next.
Ms. Bell?
I agree on the spray park thing and something in Lakewood, so. I also attended the Emergency Food Network event, and I thought it was absolutely wonderful. And the building is just another step into securing, well, food security and taking care of that in Lakewood. I think it was just, they have so many opportunities and things that they want to do. So I think that the other council members spoke to it, great. And I am also excited for my very first National Night Out. So I'm, I'm really excited in getting to meet more people and ride around with the police, too.
We'll, we'll give you, we'll give you the devil's secret handshake as to where you're supposed to end up. Mr. Whalen?
Well, thank you. Yes, indeed, National Night Out should be great, starting off with a review of the new improvements at Harry Todd Park. I look forward to seeing those. And since you brought up the subject of urban parks and spray parks, I had the occasion to be in Spokane this weekend for my 40th high school reunion, and we were walking down the new trails within Riverfront Park there, and they have this incredible new, very linear park that had been built adjacent to the new big sports complex there. The park itself is amazing because it utilized a fairly small area, surprisingly similar, similar to the God Chalks pad-sized area. And they provided all sorts of different activity zones with contoured landscaping and a spray park area, all within a very confined space packed with families and kids. And it seems to me it can be done. So I'm going to, I'm pretty reasonably close friends with the chair of the Spokane City Council, Brian Beggs, and I can either ask him, or maybe we can get somebody on our side to find out who the landscape architect was and what the cost was for that particular project, because it would be worth getting the information, just that we have it in our back pocket. And in terms of youth and youth activities, I was somewhat surprised tonight by some of the public comments about the lack of activities for youth. Not that I'm surprised of the need for it, because there is a need, but I'm curious as to where we are with the Boys and Girls Club, where we are with the YMCA that provided all sorts of activities for youth that many folks in the community funded. Where are we with the school district usage of their facilities, with perhaps interface with the city park and rec program? I know a few years back, when my kid was in need of some summer activity, that we had facilitated programs at one of the schools, Taiyi Park, I believe it was, with some folks, even some young college interns that were supervised by Dennis Hiigashiyama, I think at the time. So we got to be creative, because I think there's a huge need there. 64,000 that we spent in that one program would have gone a long way toward enhancing staff for summer parks and rec programs for teens. So we probably can do better in that area, at least in terms of coordination. I'll see you on National Night Out. Thank you.
I think there was county money that went to the city of Lakewood for some summer youth programs, lower cost barriers, because it was distributed to municipalities in addition to, in, in addition to the unincorporated Pierce County area. That came kind of as a equity issue with Tacoma asking for money. So I don't know to what extent that was utilized. Funny you should mention the South Sound 911 building, I walked by the place, Tacoma Avenue, where South Sound 911 had its, you know, the, the son of Lisa, I would say, offices, and you get your concealed carry permits, that kind of thing. Couple of trucks were out, out front, 1-800 junk, and they were just taking all the furniture fixtures and equipment out of the lease building and, and the truck to take to the dump. And I didn't see anything that really looked like it was useful. So I'm sure the employees are, are enjoying the new space. With respect to the Comfort Inn purchase, I would note that when completed, the 80, and ready for, at the conversion time, there would be 80 units that had some sort of kitchen or kitchenette and a full bath. And that's approximately the cost of a unit for a tiny home village, believe it or not. And it's about a quarter of what California spends to build something similar. So writ large, as, as the taxpayer looking at providing housing, that's a good deal. You can't replicate it.
The motel size, you mean?
The motel, yeah. The, the tiny home village is just as expensive and, and it's much more limited. They're smaller, they don't have full bathrooms in many cases, they don't have a kitchen, they, they aren't permanent. I mean, so it's, it's a fairly efficient use of, of capital. And I'll look forward to seeing you in neighborhood, neighborhood night out. Is there anything further to come before the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to invite all of you to come to the farmers market on Friday. LMCC will have their booth out this weekend.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then we're adjourned.